Watched myself and I am expecting Director Judge Jack to join us. But since we have Quorum.
You have Director Perry as well.
I'm sorry, and Director Perry is online. Thank you. Since we have Quorum, I call to order the RA Board of Directors Work Session Meeting of January 8th, 2025. Got a couple of comments to start the meeting with. First of all, I want to wish everybody, all the board members, Restonians, all my friends, relatives, friends and enemies, a Happy New Year. I hope you had a good holiday season. Relaxed and hopefully ready to kick the year going with this meeting. One announcement, one notice that I want to, that I've done before, and that is that. So Director Judge Jack just joined us as well. Please be mindful of any COI, conflict of interest, as you take on any board items, any votes, any commentary, any et cetera. This is the same comment that I mentioned last time. I will note that on the agenda, we have Agenda Item J, Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedure. This is going to be moved forward. It already actually shows up in our January 23rd meeting. So I need a motion to move that deferred out.
Mr. President, I'm going to move the adoption of the agenda where, as published, with the exception of Item J.
Is there a second? A second discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Director Perry, that's unanimous of all. Thank you. That's all I wanted to comment, and let's move on to Item B. So we have approval of January 9th. We've already done that, and I'm going to move on to Item C, Member Comments. Brittany, do we have any member comments?
Yes, we have one person who signed up for member comments, Mr. Bill Roundtree. You've been asked to unmute.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Roundtree, please state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Okay, Bill Roundtree, 1963 Burton Hill Road in Reston, Virginia. I've decided I'm not going to have any member comments tonight. I would prefer to listen and learn. And then we'll get back to you at a later date with any views or opinions or suggestions that might help your deliberations. So given your long agenda, I'm going to save you five minutes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Should move on to.
Motion two. Oh, there's another member comment.
There's another member comment. Brittany.
Mr. Abbott, you've been asked to unmute.
I am unmuted, I think.
Mr. Abbott, you state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Sure, my name is Ed Abbott. I live at 2218 Wake Robin Lane. Item four of Agenda E, Agenda Item E, CEO Update. Mr. Cummings, Cummins states, "I firmly believe that the board would benefit greatly from working together in a retreat setting, retreat setting to affirm a variety of things, including but not limited to role of adopted strategic plan," and he goes on to other things. "I have reviewed several YouTube videos of your meetings. The, those videos strongly suggest that such a retreat is needed." Please take his suggestions seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other member comments?
If there's anyone else online who'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand or send us a message in the chat.
Are we on Item D?
No additional.
Move to adapt to approve the consent calendar, which includes the December 12th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Second discussion.
Can you have just a second?
Yeah, all right. Director Judge Sack, you go ahead.
If you look at the minutes at the last paragraph before the close of the meeting, the first line says PRC, and in parenthesis, Public Recreational Facilities. I believe that should be Planned Residential Community.
Okay.
And so I would suggest that be corrected.
Move to amend.
The minutes.
The minutes of December 12th to incorporate what Director Flashman said, and then approve the minutes or the consent calendar as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous of all, thank you very much. We are ready to move on to Item E1. So tonight, we've got Fairfax County staff to talk to us about the PRC amendment. And Mike, would you like to introduce our guests here? Bill, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, President Mappar. I'll do a very brief introduction. So as the board knows, the county's introduced an initiative to amend and update the PRC zoning district, and we are a very large property owner within the PRC district, owning a number of different kinds of facilities, recreational facilities, open space, and so forth. You all may recall that we asked the county some time ago to consider this update as a way to try to clarify the ordinance and help the county administer that ordinance as we look to make some improvements to our facilities. So when the county first came out with the initiative, we approached the county and asked if they'd be willing to come do a meeting just with RA. It was not on their original calendar. I just want to thank county staff because they agreed to come give a presentation tonight just to RA and take our feedback. The other piece is the board should recall that you adopted a position on this particular ordinance, and we actually sent draft red lines articulating some of the metrics that we had in mind that occurred about a year ago. President Farrell, at that time, testified to the county. We have re-sent that back to county staff, and then our staff have been having what I would describe as productive conversations with Mr. Malin and his staff. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Malin, let him give a presentation to the board, and if there are Q and A or whatever you'd like to do after that. Our staff are here, Natalie Siriou in the back, as well as Mike Reynolds. So happy to talk about our engagement, should the board want to talk about that as well. So I'll turn it over to Bill to introduce the county staff.
Well, thank you very much on behalf of the board for being here, and please also introduce your colleagues.
Thank you again, Bill Malin, Fairfax County Zoning Administration. I'm Assistant Director and also the lead on this amendment. I'm joined here today with Leslie Johnson, the zoning administrator, and Kathy Belzner. Kathy is the zoning evaluation division. She is the lead on when a minor modification is presented to the county, her and her staff respond to those type of requests. So that's why she's here to answer those questions. So as we said, we'll give you a brief presentation. This information is available on our webpage. We'll have that in the presentation. We had a detailed white paper that was available, should have been presented. Community, I think, has it, as well as we've done a couple of open community houses, met with our planning and board members, kind of bringing this subject up. So if we go to the next slide. Okay. So as mentioned, this came about in 2023, when the board was re-adopting the zoning ordinance, at that time known as ZMod, as a request that there would be a look at when PRC plan exceptions would be applicable, particularly as related to minor changes to open space part of it. So that was adopted, put on the work program in 2023. We have done since early this year, or actually 2024, we started looking at that amendment in more, in closer detail. As I mentioned, we brought it to put out some white papers, draft texts, and started the outreach as we would amendment to help inform next steps, so we can move on to the next, next one. So as indicated, the PRC plan change really impacts the three communities of Burke, Cardinal Forest, and Reston. And amendment is really focused on PRC. We do have one minor change we'll talk about relates to all districts, minor modifications, but the bulk of the changes are when a PRC plan would not be required. So what you can do as a minor change to your approval and not trigger the need to go through the legislative process, whether that be simply asking the questions in administration or going through minor modification, which allows for administrative approvals to pass approvals. So when we started reviewing this application or this proposal, we started looking at how PRC applications, PRC plans can do minor additions as opposed to any other zoning district can do minor addition. As I mentioned, we have, it's called minor modification, and applies to if you have a previous approval, you can do minor modifications at approval through an administrative process. PRC can use both options. They can use what's on the ordinance as exceptions to the PRC plan, or if it goes beyond that, they can ask for a minor change to the minor modification process. So we'll go to the next slide. And so you'll see here, and this is a summary of when you can be exempt from a PRC plan. It talks about if you want to do a single-family building, if you want to do additions to your, your A-Tatch or your D-Tatch building. And we're not doing anything on that, really kind of focusing on numbers three, four, and five, which relates to building additions, larger building additions, changes to non-structural elements, talking about parking, talking about setbacks, talk about transitional screening, changes to minor accessory structures in open space. And the last one is talking about, you know, temporary uses or accessibility improvements. So again, this proposal is really focusing on three, four, and five. And we're looking at, and if you can go to the next slide, really looking at, and this is number three, focusing on, all right, we have a building addition, and if you're in a PRC district, you're allowed to have a building addition. It could be 10% of the existing building, but no more than 2,000 square feet, and that would not require a PRC plan. If you're in any other zoning district, you have some additional rules. You can do a 500-square-foot building addition or 5%, whichever is the greater, and the PRC is whoever's the lesser. And again, you know, it gives you up to a max of 2,500 square feet for your building addition. If you're a really large development, you can get a little bit bigger building addition at 1% of that. So what does that mean? We go to the next slide, and you can see the exact language, kind of side-by-side comparison. Again, you'll have all this information, you're expected to read now, and how it reads where a PRC plan, PRC district can say, I want to do a building addition, I could fall on the left, or if I'm beyond what the left would give me, I would then fall on the right-hand side of this graph and have to ask for a minor modification. And a minor modification is an application to staff. It's, you submit your request in, provide your documentation of what you're requesting, what you're proposing, and they write back to you, say it's allowed or not based on the zoning ordinance. Similar would be done if we were asked to interpret whether you'd fall under PRC plan exception. You write us a letter, we write you back, say, yes, you do, or no, you don't. So minor modification, if you're doing a building addition, there is a notification process of adjacent properties under the PRC process, PRC plan exception, it doesn't have that same requirement in the ordinance. So there's some distinctions there. And, you know, we can focus on, we really want to kind of focus on thinking about these building additions, particularly for tonight, as applying to non-residential, multifamily buildings, because we already talked about single-family D-Tatch, single-family A-Tatch already is exempt for building additions. So thinking about, you know, if you have an office building, how much of a, how much additional office can they build without going back through PRC plan and a public process to make that change? How much they could do administratively? And that's really what we wanted to look at and say, is there a reason why PRC district should be different than Plan Development Commercial District, Plan Residential Mix District, in terms of building additions for something that has been previously approved by the board? So we go to the next slide. So you can see sort of a comparison, what your building may be, what you may get under a PRC plan exception, what you may be get under minor modification. So if you're under a 5,000-square-foot building, you actually get a bigger addition by asking the question through a minor modification. If you're over a 40,000-square-foot building, again, you get a bigger addition by asking the question through minor modification. If you're sort of in between, the PRC district can get a bigger addition administratively than the other zoning district in the county. So again, we thought, is there a reason why we should continue to keep that discrepancy? Now, as part of the proposals that we put forward, the consideration is to, if you're doing a building addition, to steer you forward to the minor modification provisions and not have a separate carve-out in the PRC district. We go to the next slide. Other things that the PRC plan exception goes, is similar to minor modifications, they said non-structural changes. So in the PRC district, you can ask for a 10% increase in parking and land area, not number of spaces, the land area, and you don't have to do a PRC plan. You can also do some changes to setbacks or transitional screening, 10%. Similar provisions are there in minor modifications, so that 10% change to, you know, yards and reductions. So have some similar provisions, not exact, but very close, on the next slide. And this is what, you know, kind of maybe the focus of why the board asked us to look at this was changes to open space, community structures. So you have the ability under PRC to do minor accessory structures in open space. You have some similar flexibility in minor modifications to do building additions, as well as changes to minor, you know, changes to your open space. And we'll get Kathy to certainly give examples if want about things that we do for minor modification for previous approvals to pools or other, you know, open spaces, structures. Go to the next one. So since we've last met, you know, it's like all of our amendments, we go out there, we do some outreach, we did a number of community meetings, we met with the board, we talked internally, so we're looking at some new concepts since what we published the white paper. Couple of these are right there. So the one example I gave you where the PRC district can do a 10% increase in parking or changes to non-structural elements, we're looking maybe just leaving that as is and not changing that and pushing that to the minor modification. There's some uniqueness in PRC where, in another, another plan district, you're typically going to have proffers, and if you want to increase your, your, your parking, the process for the, a non-PRC district is go for a minor variation, which requires proffers to ask that question to the board. Since we know a lot of PRC, particularly Reston, are not proffered, you wouldn't have that same flexibility. So we're looking at retaining that current provision that was number three about doing non-structural elements just to as a PRC plan exception as opposed to minor modification. We're also looking at ideas that would, in a fee schedule, you know, minor modification is $660 application fee. So an HOA would be automatically get half that fee. I wouldn't have to ask the board. The board already has authority to waive any fee they want to. So if there was ever a requirement that you had to go through a PRC plan, you, you already have the ability to ask the board, or anyone could ask the board to modify that fee. But particularly for minor modification, we'd be looking at set up a reduced fee automatically. And we're also been looking at additional language related particularly for community recreation facilities, and that's not, again, buildings, that's why I wanted to call it earlier. Want to keep the current restriction in minor modification for buildings, but we did talk, you know, we had lots of good conversations with Mac and Ally, talking about not just RA, but just generally community recreation facilities. As I indicated, you can do a 500-square-foot addition. So if you have a small bathhouse of 500 square feet, you could have an addition of 500 square feet through minor modification, but many cases, that may not be enough. And, you know, we think we could recognize that there maybe needs to be more flexibility for community facilities, for building additions, either be a new one or an addition to an existing one. We're not at a point that we have text that we can share yet. We're still batting around some ideas. You know, as an example, maybe, you know, instead of 500 square feet, maybe it's a thousand, maybe it's a percentage, you know, something to that effect, that we allow more flexibility. But there'd still be, you know, kind of a cap that you're going to take a small community facility and turn it into 50,000 square feet. That would trigger a need for a PRC plan. So it would be automatic, but be more flexibility for the homeowners association to do for that community recreation facilities. Not sure if it'll live it only in the PRC or if it'll be county-wide modifications. Again, those are things we're still kind of batting around. Next slide. So one thing, this is the one change that we are proposing that would impact non-PRC districts, and PRC could also take advantage. If you have an active rec facility and the homeowners association or the governing body says, we want to swap it out for another active rec facility with similar impact, we let that go through minor modification process without the need, again, for amending your final development plan and amending your PRC plan. So that's one that would live in a minor modification, so it could be county-wide. And that's something that's not new, but that's one that potentially could impact, again, swapping out active rec for active rec. Wouldn't be a new facility, but it would be replacing an existing facility for something different. And we'll go to the last slide. And as indicated, we do have our webpage up here that provides a copy of the white paper, provides copies of the previous presentations, as well as my contact information. And so after tonight, you know, we're going to kind of get together, get the feedback we have today, regain and kind of figure out the next steps, flesh out some of our ideas we've been talking about the last few weeks. At that point, we'll have to decide whether we have more community meetings before we release text or wait to release text, you know, and get some more feedback on some new ideas. With community meetings, we don't have any set timeframe when we're taking the next, next steps. You know, once we kind of get, fall under the lengths we're comfortable with, you know, we'll go to the board and ask them if they want to authorize amendment and go through planning and board public hearings. And of course, anytime between now and then, you have ability to reach out to me if any thoughts you may have, comments, suggestions, we're always open to ideas. So we're at a point where just sort of regrouping and rethinking and happy to answer any questions you may have tonight.
Thank you very much for the brief, and if you don't mind, I think we have some members who will have some questions for you.
We're going to hear from one of the other county staff members.
I don't have any stand remarks, but if you have questions that tied in.
That was the understanding.
Kathy Billman.
Right.
Thanks for coming out tonight. And Ms. Johnson, thanks for coming out tonight.
I already said that.
I have a motion. I'd like to move to include the presentation that Bill Malin just gave and put it in our packet for this evening, and also ask staff to find ways to circulate the information to our membership.
We did provide a copy earlier today, so however you want to.
Yeah, I know, because it's in, yeah, but it didn't make our packet, so I'm just kind of asking staff to do that.
Can there be unanimous consent on that motion, Mr. President? How does the rest of the board feel about that?
No objection.
Any objections? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Johnson.
Yeah, just a very minor question. On your previous slide to this one, excuse me, you mentioned the term materially, like material change. Yeah, it is not material, materially change. Can you define materially change for me, please?
I don't know that I can define the term as far as what it means specifically in the ordinance. What I can say.
Good question.
With minor modifications in general, is that the limitations that Bill referenced are kind of our guardrails, if you will, and it's an administrative process, but requests are not a guarantee. What we have to take a look at is whether it still is reasonably within what was approved. So if there's not such specificity with a recreational facility, then, then, you know, if, if there's currently a tennis court and it just needs to be some other active recreation, you know, we can make that consideration. Now, if there is a proffer or development condition that says you will have two tennis courts, period, as part of the approval, that's not something we have flexibility in when the language is that clear. So we, we have those guidelines when the flexibility is available, but it may not always be the case depending on how the approval was written, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Director Farrell.
So I appreciate the, the effort that the staff has made to come in the direction of the association submission. For those members, fellow members of the board who may not have been here when we made our submission, it's on the last page of this board item. What I want to make clear is that what we were trying to accomplish is to have three distinct buckets, right? One bucket is you got to have a PRC amendment, which is a rezoning. We all know about what those costs are. We had done that twice, to my memory, and somebody can correct me, when we changed Stonegate from a pool to a tennis court in a community center. It's my memory that we went through a rezoning to accomplish that, a PRC amendment to accomplish that, and that's the South Gate Community Center today. Originally, that was a pool, and RA has ground leased that to the county, and the county operates the South Gate Community Center. That was accomplished through a rezoning. Then there was another occasion when we decommissioned a pool. I believe it was Lake, the Lake Anne Pool. And again, that was converted from one recreational facility to another recreational facility, but at that time, we, we had to go through, the association had to go through a rezoning in order to accomplish that. So I'm gratified that we're talking about, if you're going from rec facility to rec facility, even though they're different, you're not talking about going through a rezoning. That's an advantage, and so I'm, I'm gratified that we're getting there. What I think, let me ask this question, Mr. Malin. If there would have to be a submission, more than just a letter, in order to obtain a minor modification, there would have to be some, our engineering drawings or other things in order to communicate what's involved in order to seek a minor modification. It's more than just a letter. Isn't that correct?
Well, good, Kathy. I think it's also good depending upon what you're proposing. So certainly if you're saying, I have an existing facility, I wanted to change to a different facility, we're going to want to know what that different facility is.
And that, or if we're making modifications to an existing facility.
Yes, now, we're not looking for a full-blown, you know, set of drawings like you would submit for a PRC plan. What we would look for with a minor modification request is generally an overlay of what is existing and/or approved with what you are proposing to change, so we can see the extent of the difference, so we can see if there are changes in the setbacks, so we can see if it's affecting landscape or any of the other things, along with the description. So it, it's not typically, you know, and there may be architectural questions, you know, if you're adding a building addition, what is that going to do to how it looks and that sort of thing? But it's, it's nowhere near the extent of engineered drawings that the other processes would require. But it's more than a letter, unless you're changing something numerically that doesn't have a visual that goes with it.
Thank you. And just to, for my fellow board members to be clear, if the minor modification were denied, the board would have two alternatives. One would be to appeal the denial to the BZA, and the other one would be to file for a PRC zoning amendment.
Well, right, in a sense, if, if we're denying it, we're saying that it can't be done administratively. We're not saying you couldn't do it under other circumstances. So a denial would be essentially, it is beyond the scope of this process. You need to seek another, you know, the proper approval.
And that would either be we appeal that determination to the BZA, or we go through a rezone.
Correct, yeah.
There's not a, am I missing, is there a third alternative?
The only interim alternative exists for, Bill touched on it briefly, only for rezoning approvals where there are proffered conditions. There's one interim step of you can request what's called a minor variation. If there's one thing that's in one proffer, you want to change just that, it goes to the board for a vote, but it's not a public hearing, it's sort of an interim step.
And since, since, since most of Reston Association's land is not proffered, that's not a, that's not a process that's available to us. So the, the interest in the board when we directed this amendment back in May of last, last year, is that right? The 2023 or 24, it was during the, during the, the ZMod process, was to try and get to a point where we use the exception process to avoid having to go through either a minor modification, which I don't recall that RA ever pursued, and to reduce that number of, of PRC amendments, but also to have clear guidance on when do we need to go get a, something more than a site plan. Always have to get a site plan, everybody understands that. In the, I don't know if you have a copy of, of what RA submitted, handed to you.
I, I just don't have it with me, but I certainly know about it.
I'm sure you do. Maybe, maybe somebody can put it up on the screen. Brittany, it's in the word package.
Page 23. What's the question?
Bear with me, I want them to have it, have it in front of them. Among the questions that Mr. Malin and I have gone back and forth on is the issue of year-round enclosures regardless of seasonal use of similar structures. So what we had in mind there is we've had two situations here in Reston. One was the bubble at the Rich Heights Pool that we put in at some point. And the other one was we examined. And the other one was, we examined enclosing the Lake Newport Pool so that it could, because it's our Olympic distance pool and our master's swim club wanted that to be available to them year-round. And so in thinking about what that means for the association is, do we really need to go through any kind of process in order to put a bubble over one of our pools, or to put, enclose one of our pools with a semi-year-round facility? The hope was that we wouldn't have to go through even a minor modification. And we gave a list of the things that we would like to be able to do without having to go through minor modifications. And I, I hope that we've been having those conversations about what is and isn't an exemption, because exemptions, to the extent that we can agree on what is exempt, it eliminates uncertainty, right? And it reduces the administrative processing for each of the things that are listed in item number six and the submission that was made. We're only focused on recreational facilities, community recreational facilities. I don't think, just so it's clear, we're not interested in making it easier for developers to develop something, but simply to reduce the administrative burden and the, and the uncertainty of the association to provide slides, or hot tubs, or heated pools, or bathroom facilities, or multi-use cords, or splash pads, or batting cages. And so it seems to me, to the extent that we can get those uses in exemption qual category, it would advance the original intention of the association when this application was submitted. And I hope that we can continue to have a conversation with Mr. Cummins and the county staff to get as many of those things possible in, in that status.
Sure. So the, the range of things that you mentioned have pretty differing impacts. Things as small as hot tubs, for example, are probably not gonna rise to the level of us needing anything. But then you talk about, you know, putting a bubble over a facility, that's similar to a structure in terms of a, you know, visual land use impact potentially. So we, I think in part of our previous discussions, we've said that prior to submitting a minor modification, if you're not sure if something that you wanna do rises to the need of one, or you want the certainty to know whether that's gonna, you know, trigger that process down the road, we, we have the same availability as you did with the, do we need a, you know, are we exempt from the PRC or not? You can always talk to me or, you know, folks in my office about, hey, for this specific, you know, proposal, and, and we can look at what that specific approval entailed and say, okay, for something like this, it is gonna rise to the level versus for something else, it may not. So we, on a case-by-cases, can take a look and kinda give you guidance, you know, depending on what, what it is.
But that's just the object, we're trying to get into a situation where we don't need to do that.
I understand, I understand, but the, the range of things that you, you mentioned are wildly different in terms of their impacts potentially.
So maybe it would be helpful for the, to further the conversation is to look at that list in item six and have a conversation about, yeah, this, we're comfortable with an exemption on this, we're not comfortable with an exemption on that.
Well, and you guys can talk about whether you've done that for some of those items or.
Well, and again, I'm not sure our approach is to trial list everything that would fall under exceptions. We generally try not to throw laundry lists of things in there, because you're gonna think of a recreation thing in two years, it's not on this laundry list, or say, well, it's not listed, therefore, obviously it needs to have a PRC plan. When you have a little more flexibility of saying, such as, when new things come up, it can be the such as, when you put, here's the 10, 15 things that are exempt, those are 10 or 15 things exempt, anything that's not listed could be easily interpreted as, it's automatically a PRC plan.
So, I mean, we're dealing with that today because you've only got three things listed in the PRC.
It's a such as.
It's gazebos, benches, and trashcans. And if we're not a gazebo, or bench, or trashcan, we're looking at a PRC amendment. So, I, I mean, if there's a generic description.
Yeah, we're arguing that there are other such as's that fit into that.
So can we expand the such as list explicitly?
Correct.
Rather than having to guess at it, you know?
That's not what I was arguing to do, but, and again.
Well, from our point of view, if we don't have a such as that's expanded, then.
Be careful what you ask for, because under the zoning administrator.
Could you come to the mic? Just have you come to the mic, sorry.
I just, I just wanna, you know. We're not inclined to do a list, but what we're inclined to perhaps look at is, you know, a percentage, or if you've got existing recreation facilities and you're wanting to put things that are advancing that recreation facility, or accenting it, or, you know, you wanna add a better snack bar, you wanna build your pool house or something, I, I think we all can agree that those aren't things that would necessarily rise to the level of a minor mod or a, or a PRC plan requirement. I am concerned that, you know, if you're adding brand-new facilities in an area that was previously open space, I think you need a PRC plan. I'll be right up front about that. That would be my.
I don't think there's any debate about that, ma'am.
My recommendation, but when you start to laundry list things in the ordinance, to Bill's point, is sometimes I have more flexibility as the zoning administrator who, who has the authority to make determinations. If something's not specifically listed, I can say what it's most similar to. So we can, we might have the ability to say, it's okay, but once you start listing all of these, and then you come up with something that doesn't quite fit into that list, you know, then I'm, I might be stuck. You know, so I'm just, I'm just, we're not in, necessarily in favor, could we expand the list a little bit more than what we have today? The answer is probably yes, but, you know, I don't wanna, to be honest with you, get into, you know, what kinda hot tub, or what, you know, it, it can constrain things.
If I can add to what my two colleagues are saying, I don't think they're asking for specific additions, so much as additional categories, so we can map things to those categories.
But, but again, what we're looking at is, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, Reston Association is a very large corporation, if you will, right? That has property that they manage. There are other large HOAs, Kingstown, you know, they're not, may not rise quite to the level of Reston, but it's a similar situation. And then there are private facilities that do the same thing. And so the other thing we have to be careful about is that, you know, by state code, we have to treat similar uses similarly, which is why we started to focus more on, okay, we already have minor modifications for other P District provisions, let's just, you know, to the extent that we can, use the same process for, for the similar types of requests. We met with Mac and others, and then John talked, so, you know, we're kind of saying, okay, maybe we go back to keeping more of the PRC plan exceptions and expanding those to a certain extent, as Bill said, for community recreation facilities. I don't know that we're going to come to 100% agreement. You may not end up agreeing with where we end up with our language, but it is subject to public hearing, and it is subject to, you know, the board and, and people can have an opportunity to comment. We're still kinda wrestling with what that might, what that might look like. And John, to your point, we have found determinations that we've written to you all, maybe it was Larry Butler at the time, or whatever, but we have done determinations on PRC plans and minor modifications in Reston for community recreation facilities. So we do have those. So it's not like all of a sudden we're subjecting you all to something we never did before, because we did. It could be that the question was never asked, number one, and number two, when it went through the site plan process, LDS may not have ever asked, well, is this in conformance with the, you know, the approval? Even, even, even a blob approval, you know, we would look at that and, and determine, you know, what, what was approved and, and then make a, make a determination. So we're, we're trying to address the concerns that you all have, but I don't wanna make promises that we're going to be 100% in sync. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't think that's reality, but, but I think we're really trying hard to get a good portion of what you're, what you're looking for.
Mr. President, I, I, this is, this is my last comment. I'm thanking the staff for coming, trying to get, come in our direction. That's a really significant distance from where we started here, and, and I truly do appreciate it, and I encourage our staff to continue to have those conversations, and hopefully we can get, you know, within 45-yard line. Before we, before we get to a request for authorization, which would be my goal.
I think that's what we want.
I have every belief that we're not gonna agree on everything, but I also would like to narrow the differences. And right now, or at least at the public hearing, we're, we're 100 yards apart, and I think we're moving toward each other. And I thank the, the county staff for making the effort and understanding our concerns, because they really are specific to community recreational facilities in the PRC district, that, where we don't have any proffers, and we're dealing mostly with bubble plans. So how do we enable the community to continue to upgrade our facilities, refresh our facilities, and keep them relevant for our membership? Thank you, Mr. President.
Director Farrell, thank you very much. And.
I have a question.
Yes, Director Santa, you have a question?
Yep. Under the last slide that you showed about similar impact, my question is, would new lighting upgrades be considered a minor modification? For example, 23 LED lights standing at 26 feet tall?
You're talking about lights that are not there today?
Correct.
That would not be a minor modification.
So putting lights in a recreational facility as described would not.
Sports illumination lights, if that's what you're asking?
Would not be considered a minor modification.
Right, if it's sports illumination lights, you know, similar, we have special permits all throughout the county for pools that want to add lights, they come through an amendment. That's a change in use. I mean, that's the same concept we've said before, you know, so if you have an approval that does not show lights, and you're acting as sports illumination lights, I would say that's gonna be beyond what could be done as a PRC plan exemption or minor modification, expanding hours of the facility.
And then my, my, sorry.
I was gonna say, to, just to clarify the reasoning behind that, if there's a facility that's not lit presently and doesn't show lighting, and then lighting is being requested, that significantly expands when and how much the facility can be used, which we consider an intensification, and that's typically gonna be outside of the minor mod process.
So with the latest, the latest proposal that you have shown today and through the white paper, would the Barton Hill BZA appeal decision be overturned by this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It would be, certainly in the sense of the staff's interpretation of going from tennis to pickleball would be reaffirmed by that minor modification, and we did that through a minor, we did it through interpretation of PRC plan specifically. The minor modification would say, if that was the same question for any other homeowners' association, they could ask the same question. There's a whole bunch of pickleball stuff that Kathy looks at specifically, so there might be specifics in there, but it wouldn't go to the extent of saying, sports lights could be added without a process. Public process.
Thank you. Director Justin, yeah, of course.
I just wanna, for, for reference sake, Director Farrell had mentioned bubble plans, which I don't use that term, but I think I know what you're referring to. For reference sake, the PRC has had its own zoning ordinance because we are different, right? We're different than when, when Kingstown was founded, because they weren't founded in the PRC. So a lot of our approvals in the history of Reston and our PRC plans were done differently than the rest of the county. And so when, when staff are looking at some additional changes to this language, I would encourage you guys to bring out some of our old PRC plans. I know, Mr. Malin, you worked on the Barton Hill one, and, you know, we all searched for more information than, than either party could find when we were going through that process. Those plans are, do not look like what is being approved around the rest of the county, and I think they intentionally didn't look like that because we were the PRC. And so we have things on our plans that look like, here's, you know, a square box with recreation facility. It doesn't necessarily outline that, you know, here are the boundaries of the court, here's where the benches are gonna go, here's where the, the foliage or the, the trees, tree lines are. The PRC plans back in the time in which they orig, these recreational facilities were originally made, did not have that level of detail. And so there are many times, and I don't disagree that we have, RA has asked the county for some determinations, because we're unsure in those cases. But there were also many times in which we've changed our recreational facilities and not asked the county, because we knew that we didn't need to. And I think where, why the board took the action that it did is because we felt like there had been a change in dynamics in what the county would or would not approve when we went through the Barton Hill process. And that's why we're looking for the clarification and, and, and from a, a standpoint of the expenditures that we would have to make to literally actually do an architectural drawing, which we don't have for most of our facilities that were originally approved, or even updated when we added some features to them, we didn't need to make, you know, architectural drawings to do that, or we at least needed to ask our engineering teams to make, you know, a small section, because we were adding, you know, 2,000 square feet. We just always knew when we were, when we were changing something less than 2,500 square feet, chances are we could just move forward through our own planning process in which we had public input from our members, because they have to, we have to, RA itself has to go through the DRB process, where all of our members have the ability to come and say, we don't want you to add doors to that facility, or a hot tub to that facility. So if you could look at it through that lens, when, when you are considering changes, I think that would be really helpful, because the cost, I certainly appreciate the reduction in fee that you put in, in the language for us, but from a, a fee standpoint in paying the county government versus going to an engineering firm, that's where the big costs are. Or having to, you know, outsource to an attorney to represent us, which is what you normally need to do when you go through, no offense to our general counsel, but you tend to go to land use specialized attorneys. Those are really big costs that our members would face in having to go through a minor modification process where we're unsure or unclear, and with the number of facilities we have, that just adds a ton of money for our membership, and that's what the board's goal is, is to get some type of clarification without adding that additional cost. But from a, a membership standpoint, you know, to our members who are listening, I think that I needed to make clear that our, our plans are just not as, not as thoroughly documented, because the PRC was, was founded, you know, under a, a different pretense than the, than the rest of the county was formulated in their plans. So if, if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it. We do, and are seeking to certainly follow the Fairfax County rules, but because we have our own processes of making sure that our, our members have a say in all of the facilities that we design or modify, we feel like we need a little bit more specificity on those boundaries of which, you can go up to this line, but once you cross this line, you know, you're gonna need to get, to get a determination from, from staff, or go through those other two processes that, that Director Farrell had mentioned. But in general, we, we, we don't always feel, or have not in the past felt, like we had to come through the administrative process, even to ask for a determination for many of the changes that we have made to our facilities in the past.
Thank you.
So I will say very briefly, yes, PRC was different when it was created in 1962, required a development plan, many of those development plans, 60s, 70s, 80s, were very blob in nature, but the PRC plan has always required a second step. And the PRC district in 1962 to 1969 required final class approved by the planning board of supervisors. Between 69 and 2007 required primary class, primary site plans, PRC plans approved by Land Development Services. Those are all detailed out. Those are all detailed applications, all detailed plans. By ordinance, those are considered PRC plans today. So that's what we look at. We looked at what was approved administratively, not just a blob plan, but there is a site plan, there is a PRC plan that is detailed on all these sites. And that was either approved by the board of supervisors or by Public Works, now Land Development Services. And two thousand and seven is when we made the change to make it magisterial. So the board of supervisors started approving that based upon some of the concern, not RA, but some of the blob nature concerns that developers were taking advantage of, changing things that were not intended to be there. So you see, you see proffers in the mid-eighties that required conceptual plans to be approved by the boards so they could see the detail because there was concern that there wasn't enough tie-in when it was administrative process. But there is a PRC plan on every application. You're going to find one dating back to the sixties on these, and certainly in the seventies. So it is more detailed than the blob nature, but what went through the public process is different.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your time. I know that you were, you had five minutes. Obviously, there's a lot of interest that you can gather. And we really look forward to working with you and working this together with our staff and everybody else. Thank you for being here. Yep, thank you.
Okay, I believe we are ready for Mr. Cummins.
I'm sorry. Okay, in the interest of time tonight, I'm going to be super brief. Two of the, the items that I commented on are just things that are forthcoming and you've asked questions about. So for example, I mentioned during the budget process that we would be hiring a consultant to help out on some of our organizational development around DEI training. The board has asked in the past, and the board president and I are charged with coming back to you with ideas for DEI training. So I've talked to Jalal about that. I, I'm going to build into the scope of work, a module of some kind, and we'll be back with some ideas. And that'll be probably sometime in the spring. So we just went through a procurement process on it. Just wanted to keep everybody in the loop because that question has come up. The other was, there was a question that has come up a couple of times around the annual planning session that's required by resolution. That's going to actually happen at your next meeting. You may recall, I think it was sometime October or November, there was a question, when's that going to happen? And we told you we could be ready by the second meeting in January. So that's what the, the lion's share of those items, you know, that will be coming back. And then the other item that, and I want to spend a few minutes on this because we're introducing a new program here. And I think it's something that can be very fun and could be really, really cool. So you'll notice in front of you, there's a little pouch. Inside that pouch is a challenge coin. So I talked to the Recreation Department, I don't know how many of you are familiar with challenge coins. Challenge coins are generally very big in public safety, military. They're, it's a thing that is swapped out by a number of different organizations, represents the organization, sometimes there are special annual or, you know, anniversary kinds of things. So we printed a limited edition of these and we intend to use it as a recognition program out in the community, could be for volunteers, could be for significant benefits to the community for people that have made a significant difference. I wanted to get one to all of you as a commemorative one for you to hold on to keep. You'll notice on the front side is a, the Bob's, actually it's the Bronze Bob, that's what everybody calls, you know, the, the statue out there at Lake Gann. I think it's a very nice design on the back, of course, with, with RA. So we're going to be back with some distribution criteria, and I do imagine a, a role for the board. Almost the lion's share of these are going to be handed out administratively, but I'd like to get some into your hands, you know, for you. And then we would just ask, after we set out some, some generalized criteria that you let us know who you give them to, so we can keep track of who's being kind of recognized and in what way. So anyways, I just wanted to introduce the program and make sure you all, all get one. I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any, but really, there's more to come on that, that too. And these are hot off the presses. We just got these like a couple of weeks ago. And that's all I had for you tonight.
Any questions for our CEO update? Yes.
During our next board meeting, we have slated right now to look at committee work plans. And I was wondering if it was possible to kind of send those out as the staff liaison to the committees finalize them versus just receiving all of them in the packet the Friday before the meeting? If, whichever ones you get.
Yeah, let me, I'm not even sure the status of all those at the moment. But yeah, I understand, so the question I think really is, hey, there are going to be a lot of work to review. If there's any way we can get them ahead of time, that'd be helpful. Let me work with the different liaisons and Brittany to see how we can accomplish that.
Okay, thank you. On the challenge coin, I just, it was surprised, I was surprised to see it in our packet. I didn't know that we were embarking on setting, spinning up a new program. So I, I don't know the cost involved in the program. I don't know staff time or the criteria of which we're giving out coins. I understand from the packet that we gave out a coin already. Would encourage staff to consider giving them out to people that reside in Ruston as you go through it. So I, it's hard for me to, to comment or, or speak to the program because I don't think the board knows much about it. And the other thing that was in the packet under yours was the capital improvement program. It says that you'll schedule some meetings with us in the future. Do you have any, like, what, what, what are you, do you know what they're going to be about? Like, what, what are you asking us?
Yeah, we're going to go through all that at the next meeting when we do our annual planning.
So you want to wait until?
These are all heads-up topical items that I think are significant that the board needs to be thinking about because I believe you need to be talking about them in 2025. So we'll go through more details and talk about that because as you look at, and just think in big pictures, I tend to think by quarter. And so if we only have six meetings in a quarter and you look at what's showing up on your agenda items and then you defer items, I want to make sure you are seeing what I think are big move things that affect, and so you can see them a year out. And so we'll, we'll talk about some of those and what a rhythm might look like at the next meeting.
Okay, and then with, with that, you'll, the strategic plan will also come for, I'm assuming you guys have made changes to it for the, the items under the strategic, the work plan items for 2025 because some of them would have already been done for 2024, some of them would have been held over and maybe some additions that you would have added. So in conjunction with the seven items that are on this one, the strategic plan will come along with that, so we will talk about them in tandem. Is that the plan?
So yeah, let me answer that in two ways. So we have a strategic plan implementation program that also identifies what's coming, you know, in the future. So that's a reporting mechanism to you all. I was certainly happy to comment on the big items that are coming in 2025. Generally, those are things you've already discussed. So there are things that were in progress, you know, and will finish up in 2025. And I, we've given you a report on the status. There's actually a lot of things that have already been done or, or, or launched in like the third and fourth quarter of, of 24.
Yeah, and I know the board received an email from you with it, but I was wondering if that would be included in the package for the members to be able to see.
Peter, do you, when did we have scheduled for the next implementation from a reporting standpoint? And we can certainly put together a list of the items we're going to hit in 25, which I think is really the work plan question you're asking.
Yeah, it's like, if we're going to talk about annual planning, then it seems to me that it would, you know, to kind of take the ideas that you want to talk about as possibilities, but also reflect on what our current strategic plan is and see if they fit in it, if there's overlap. I just feel like the discussions that we're, we're going to have behoove us to have both the strategic plan and the ideas list for things to talk about together. That's all I'm asking. And, and I don't want to reference something that the members don't have a copy of when we get there.
Is that it? Did you have comments?
Yeah, I did. On, on the last page of the update, at the top of the last page, is a conversation about assessment collection, and I don't want to get into it now, except to ask two, a couple of questions. Moving to a quarterly collection schedule, that's in addition to the opportunity for members to pay in installments, is that, this is a different concept, yes?
Yes.
Okay. When, when we get there, I think it would be important for the board to know what percentage of the membership use that quarterly.
Yes.
Actually, that, that installment program. I think it's a very small percentage and so I, I, but I think the board ought to know the benefit of that. And then, because I don't know where this initiative or this idea is coming from or what, what, what problem we're trying to solve. Oh, it's coming from, it's coming from Director Perry. All right, very good. So may, may, maybe Director Perry, at the time, not tonight, can tell us what problem we're trying to solve. The other one is moving to a, toward a change in the fiscal year. And if we could have our council ready for what would be involved in that, I think our fiscal year is set by our deed?
No.
Or, or, or our corporate documents?
It is not. Because I asked the same question and then had to look it up. I thought it was as well.
So what sets our fiscal year? What, no, hang on. By resolution, by roll of the dice, how is our fiscal year set, council?
Council wanted to look that up.
Yeah.
If you can be prepared to answer the question when the time comes, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Could we learn from the treasurer, maybe, how it's set?
It's historically been done by, just by adoption. You have proven a bi, what is in the deed is a requirement for a biannual budget. The fiscal year is determined by the board, but it, by approving a calendar year budget, you've adopted a calendar year for financial purposes. You do it every year.
Okay. Thank you. Director Johnson?
Number four on your list of board retreat, you know, I agree with your text here that you believe that the board would benefit greatly from, from having a retreat. And I agree with Mr. Abbott in his member comment tonight. Is it possible you could bring us a detailed, like, maybe a, agenda layout, just things that we can look at and really start to have the conversation? Because I feel like we've been keeping it pretty high level, and the higher the level, the more we can just kind of dodge around it. If you can just bring us things that we can discuss, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, how about, because there's going to be a lot of discussion at the next meeting about, like, do you want to do these things, yes, no? So that we can develop full-scale work plans. How about I put together something that would look like a list of ideas so you can get a sense for, you know, is this worthwhile exercise, you know, for you or not? And then if you guys decide, yes, we're really interested in a retreat, let's refine that kind of thing. That would be helpful for you.
Something to just to get, put some shape to the idea, let us know what it would look like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Going to move on to our next item, which is a brief by Friends of Ruston. As you recall, a couple of meetings ago, I had suggested that I wanted to invite Friends of Ruston to come and give us a brief. And this is an informational brief, it's not a public hearing, it's just to, for Friends of Ruston to share who they are, what they do with us. Most of us know that, but I thought it would be very helpful for everybody else to hear that. So with that in mind, I asked Kathleen Driscoll to come and give us a brief on that. Kathleen, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I've been wanting to talk with you for quite a while. Actually, it's been a full year. And it's very exciting for me to have the opportunity to share with you a lot of the highlights of what's going on with the Friends of Ruston. I'm calling this Looking Forward and Looking Back. And when I was planning this out, I was trying to think of looking forward and looking back and what that might mean. And I was reminded that I, the day before, had my five-year-old granddaughter and we'd been outside and she had enjoyed falling down on the ice. And so we came inside. And at that point, she was very upset and she wanted to play hide and go seek, which I didn't want to do. So I said, all right, I'll play, I'm thinking of an animal. So she said she would go first. That was fine with me. She was thinking of an animal from Africa with two feet. Now, what is it? Well, you know, I need some more information, Cameron, can you help me? She's like, sure, ask me questions. So I said, where does it live? Does it live in a tree? No. Does it live on the land? Sometimes. Does it live in the water? Sometimes. Well, what does it eat? I can't tell you. Oh, oh, okay. Well, what color is it? I can't tell you. But I can tell you that it starts with the letter P. I said, it starts with the letter P and you can't tell me what color it is and what it eats? Is it big? She's very big. And I said, okay, I don't, I, I don't know what animal lives in Africa that's very big that you can't tell me what it eats. And she said, it's a flamingo. And I said, a flamingo? She goes, yeah, it starts with P or maybe it's F. When I was planning, I decided that I would try very hard not to mislead you with anything. So I detailed and researched everything I'm about to tell you. And I promise, nothing is pink and it doesn't have feathers and it certainly doesn't start with the letter P. So, looking back, I'm going to start with twenty-five years ago. At that point, the board did not agree that the Nature Center actually needed a house, a facility. And so they wouldn't allow any assessment funds to be used. At that point, Vicky Wingert, who was the executive vice president, which is the equivalent of MAC today, formed the Friends of Ruston. And they literally were a group of friends, about five of them. I've spoken to almost all of them since I've taken office. And all they did, they had one goal, they were going to build Nature House. Everybody knew what their job was and that was it. And they didn't have very much structure around that because literally they were a group of friends, they met over coffee or over drinks. But since then, many things have happened. That was their first project. And when that was done, they thought that their work was finished, that group moved on, a new group moved in. In addition to the Nature House gift, scholarships have been provided for underserved students, youth in Ruston to attend RA summer camps, the swimming, nat, nature, and tennis programs. RA has received additions of interpretive signage for the pathways. Friends has also contributed to the habitat restoration. We've awarded scholarships to high school seniors who embody volunteer efforts that are complementary to the mission of the Friends. I'm sure you're aware of those past contributions. Now I'm going to kind of look back, but only a year. In 2024, what did the Friends do? One of the things that the Friends did was they donated the funds for the installation of an EV charging station at Nature House. But there's a stipulation, the money could only be used if this particular installation was available to the RA residents for free. That means that anyone who has an electric vehicle, any of you people here, can go to Nature House and fast charge your vehicle there for free. Now, the public is welcome to use it too, for a fee. The reason you might not be familiar with the details of this is it's still in the pilot stages, they are trying to make sure that they have all of the pieces in place before it goes really public. Last year, we gave out scholarships to fifty-three campers. They used their scholarships in ninety-three different summer camps. We started a school-to-pool program with Terracet. Those children went to summer school. Many of them were latchkey kids. They didn't want to go home when summer school was over. They wanted to stay right there and play with their friends. So a very creative teacher came up with the idea of taking them across the street from Terracet to the Ridge Heights Pool and teaching them how to swim. Now, what's unusual about this is that the bulk of the money that we gave the first year we started this program was actually used in purchasing bathing suits and, and pool towels and flip flops and goggles. These kids in Ruston, surrounded by pools and lakes, did not get in the water. They didn't know how to swim. At the end of the program, the children were proficient, at least proficient enough to get themselves from one point out of the pool. That's a really big deal. Now, many of the kids actually ended up learning how to swim. We expanded the program and now. We expanded the program and now Dogwood is in it. So we're really happy that we're able to bring a whole group of people that would not necessarily ever use our recreational facilities into the pools. Is this a good thing for RA? Oh, you bet it is. Among other things, you're gonna have a lot of happy residents. But you're also grooming a group of young people who will become potential lifeguards and camp counselors. And they will owe it all to these particular scholarships. Of course, we funded the environmental film series and we supported the Spring Festival. Arbor Day, Earth Day, yeah, we, we got invested in that too. We planted trees and removed exotic invasives. And we provided the material support for the corporate projects. The corporations supplied the volunteers. And then if they're going to go waiting in the streams for stream restoration, they need equipment and we funded that. Totally Trucks, that's right. We funded it this year, thank heavens, cause every little boy in town got to sit in a fire engine or go to the police car. And they all went through the central services. They, all the families got to see what the equipment is here in Ruston. A lot of the services that are provided with that equipment are virtually invisible to people who live here. If you don't walk the trails, you don't see the people emptying those trash cans. You don't see all those trucks. You don't necessarily even know all of the great things that are here. But in Totally Trucks, you get a chance to sit in them as well as see them. We had an opportunity to support the holiday entertainment for Walker, um, Nature Center and we provided the funding for the Enchanted Forest Trees. What happened to those trees afterwards? Well, they were given to families. Everybody who bought a tree gave it away. Great. Um, we added something to our youth lineup of scholarships. We added the senior movie this year. And it's a good thing because about 10% of the people who live in Ruston actually are seniors. And I don't mean 55. I mean a little more mature than that. Let me tell you or remind you, because I understand that you already know this, that we gave $77,000 to Ruston Association last year. And let me break it down because I'm a pretty simple mathematician. That is the equivalent of adding 91 properties to the assessment pool. It's like adding an entire pretty good-sized cluster. Internally, what did we do last year? Well, we reviewed, we updated, we created, we adopted lots of administrative structures. We adopted our first strategic plan. Guess what? We now use Robert's Rules of Order. We updated our bylaws, considering the advice of the Ruston Association attorney. We created a financial authorization protocol. What in the world is that? That means that people were authorized to spend money on our behalf at various levels. There never was that before. I, I'm not certain how we operated, but now everybody knows who's allowed to spend the money. We invested in CDs. That's a big deal. We have a fair amount of money and it needs to be put to good use. We developed a budget planning process. Does that sound like something that an organization would find useful? And I'm listening to you about changing your annual calendar and all those other things and I'm paying attention to that. We added three new board members. It's the most that any year has ever added that many people. We also added a treasurer and an assistant treasurer. We created an annual planning calendar, a motion tracker and a committee structure. You know how important your committees are? That's great. We do too now and we know what they're gonna do. Looking forward to next year, next year being this year, actually, 2025. Um, we're looking for a closer collaboration with Ruston Association. And in order to do that, we feel like we need to put ourselves in a similar operating calendar to yours. With the board's approval, the Friends of Ruston Board, we are going to adjust our election of officers from January to April to mirror actually what Ruston Association does. And to assist with that transition, the current slate of officers has agreed to serve an additional four months on their term. We're creating a communications plan. We are adding a music component to the Ruston Association summer camps with funds that were given to us from the Lake Anne Jazz Festival, which honors Michael Lyons. We're having a Friends of Ruston annual meeting in October. We actually should have been doing it for 25 years according to the IRS regulations, but somehow that just didn't quite happen. We're gonna be starting some new projects. We're working, um, with the Jazz Festival in a collaboration to see exactly what we can do together as an or- as two different organizations. We are establishing a fundraiser. It's called an Evening with Friends. It's March 25th at Lake House and we're going to be recognizing special Friends of Ruston. Those would be the people who've been long-term and large supporters. I personally am pushing hard for a senior-focused program. We, except for the senior movie, we really don't do anything. Um, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue building on our Winterfest activities. Winterfest is such a marvelous program. It's so, so well-accepted by the community. 9,000 people think so anyhow. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to be more involved even than last year. The last one is, in the past, we haven't worked collaboratively on projects. I'm inviting you to submit some projects to us so that we can consider them. Now, I can't promise we're gonna do it, but I can absolutely promise you that if you do not tell us what you're hoping for, it won't get done. So with that, I am concluded. But I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for the brief. I'll ask our fellow board members if they have any comments, questions that they want to ask. Any, anybody? Okay.
Thank you so much for the overview. I think that was awesome and I hope that people listening join the board. And do you want to share information of how they join the board?
Well, uh, it's actually pretty simple. Uh, there are a couple of serious pieces, but most of it isn't. They have to attend, uh, one of our board meetings so that when they say yes, they know what they're saying yes to. Um, and then they need to write a letter of interest and we encourage people to share what they'll be bringing to the board because there are certain things that we really need to flesh out our board. We can go up to 20 members. I think we're at a whopping maybe 12, hopefully. And that's about it. They come, they're interviewed by the Friends Board. The Friends makes a recommendation and then the RA Board confirms that. And that's it.
Thank you. And then my last question is, for fundraising purposes, do you have a goal that you're trying to reach for 2025 that you want the public to know about?
Well, I believe the way we worded it was $50,000. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think, um, someone else. Uh, this, during this year's budget cycle, I think it was one of the first times I had heard, granted, I have not been that, um, involved in the Ruston community budgeting process, um, before my time on the board, but it felt like we, we finally thought through an idea and presented one. I don't know if it's come your way yet, but we talked a little bit about the trails and the potential maps and something that this could involve Friends and Ruston. So it sounds like those are the types of things that you might be interested in hearing from the board moving forward. Is there a, a precedent that has happened in the past? Like, is there a wish list that goes over at times? Is this something that would be new for boards?
From RA?
From RA to Friends of Ruston?
Never. Have we gotten a wish list?
Okay. So, wonderful, that's new. We'd be creating some sort of hopeful precedent for future boards to be able to, uh, to leverage that relationship. That's awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yes.
I just want to clarify that the staff bring Friends of Ruston, um, wishlist items and ask you guys to find them on a fairly regular basis, is my understanding. Um, and that in, a, a few years ago, staff brought some larger items to the Friends of Ruston Board, um, and hadn't brought them to the RA Board. And so, um, I just want to make sure that we don't get back into that model. Um, but my understanding is that the, the staff, and, and we get updates from Laura. Laura's a great, I know that she's a liaison, um, to the, the Friends of Ruston Board. Um, and just wanted to assure you that she brings us, um, all of those, uh, things that you guys do on a quarterly basis. She does a report to the board and, and so she updates us on all of the things that you guys are doing too.
And that's wonderful that Laura does it, but you do understand Laura does not create policy. She simply is relating information to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you want to make a policy impact, you're gonna probably need to spend some time at the board. You already have two representatives seated on that board who, in addition to being seated, they also have a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for hearing me. Stay warm.
Yep. Um, item G, over to you, Matt and Ed.
And we have just, uh, two slides if those could be brought up. So let me go ahead and do an introduction. Um, one of the ideas, and we've talked about this with the board a couple of times, and I think it's a really good habit to get into, at least on significant, um, efforts and especially those that are replicatable that are gonna happen each year. The idea of doing an after-action report or talk about a post-mortem and talk about the process steps that worked well or some that the board might want to be interested in tweaking and changing, I think is a really useful step. And the reason for that is we're in the process of putting together the budget calendar right now, anticipating where we need to clear time, like, are the steps working? Is the rhythm right between meetings? The decision points, are those working so that you can all have a deliberate strategic budget adoption process? So one of the ideas was, let's talk about the structural elements of the budget, the process itself, when you make certain decisions, how you make certain decisions, the staff role in that. Um, and if, if you're interested in tweaking some of those things, it's good to know that now so that we can start bringing you alternative options for how we've done business in the past. So as you all know, I'm very big on, let's not just do what we've always done in the past. Let's ask if it's really what we want to do and the right way to do it, you know, going forward. So what we prepared for you tonight is not really a presentation. We're gonna talk about some successes and some challenges through this year's budget process as we've identified them. And then there's about five topical areas relating to what happens at different meetings and different roles and responsibilities, for example, of the fiscal committee and the full board and how those, the rhythm of those kinds of things. And we'll just do each topical area and solicit feedback from you. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Ed and we'll talk about overall highlights of the budget process and then we'll put up a, the kind of process flow itself and talk about those subject areas.
Okay, thanks. So we have just, uh, two slides and the second one is where we'll really talk more about the going forward and some of the things that were in the memo. But the first slide, if you could move to the next one here, is just a recap of some of the successes and challenges that, you know, in our view, we had, uh, this past year. Uh, the first success, there we go. First success I wanted to highlight was just, you know, the budget was quickly approved during the November meeting and, you know, everything else, uh, being equal, uh, that's better than if we went late into the night that meeting or even worse, you know, had to go to a follow-on special meeting, you know, a week or so later. So got a nice approval in our November meeting. We also had a relatively stable, uh, assessment through all the different iterations. It was, uh, 869 in last year's biennial budget, 865 draft one, 842 draft two, 848 draft three, which became the final budget. So we didn't have wild swings going, uh, both ways. So I think that's, uh, that's better than if we were having wild swings. Uh, I also, uh, worked with the SLT to try and get good inputs from them and I think we did a better job of utilizing kind of the actuals and forecasts from the current year as we built the budget. It seemed from my observation, you know, this was my first time doing it here at RA, but from my observations, it seemed in the past, the prior year's budget was used as the baseline much more so. So we tried to look more closely at the actuals and forecasts for this year. For example, the running of the 15 pools and that was running significantly over. So trying to see, you know, what we really are spending and using that as a baseline as well as getting input from the, uh, department directors. But we ensured that we had funding for operating 15 pools in the 2025 budget now. We also, uh, have some efficiencies in the budget, reducing six FTEs. And just as a reminder, those were vacant positions, not, you know, impacting any staff, but reducing, uh, six vacant FTEs. Uh, we also implemented the fee pyramid that we had a lot of discussion on. So we now have a strategy for setting our fees. We are using stream and wetland credits for the first time and collecting a surcharge on, to kind of offset credit card fees. So both of those are helping to keep the assessment down. And just a quick update on the credit card surcharge and how we're doing on the collection so far. As of yesterday, we've collected about 4.2 million of the assessments and that compares to, this time last year, it was 3.2 million. So we're actually about 30% ahead of last year. And we were actually a little concerned that, you know, building in the credit card surcharge might slow down some of those collections, but to date, we're doing quite well. Uh, only about 12% of the assessments have been paid with credit card, whereas we were getting into the 40%, you know, plus range the last couple of years. So we kind of expected it would come down with the surcharge and, you know, to us, it doesn't really matter. It's, it's a wash. So whatever's more convenient for the members, but, you know, they will have to pay that surcharge. So more of them are choosing to use the other methods like ACH or checks or debit cards to kind of avoid that, uh, surcharge. Um, and, you know, the final success I wanted to highlight was that we received over 200 member suggestions. You know, Kara and the communications team did a great job of, you know, communicating that out. If you recall, we extended the deadline to one, uh, July, you know, at the board's request. And there were challenges with that, but that, uh, did allow for, you know, the pools to open and some more time for the members to get in those suggestions. So those were some of the successes to highlight. And, you know, the last success there, 200 plus member suggestions is the first challenge as well. I mean, we had a lot of member suggestions to go through and when we get to the next slide, we'll talk some more about the going forward. But, you know, that was a somewhat painful process and we'll see how we can improve upon that, uh, this year. Uh, another challenge, uh, if you recall, the September meeting was really a light turnout. We kind of had several things conspire against us, I'd say. Uh, you know, we had the flooding in the conference room here. We were at the lake house that at the time didn't have a hybrid capability. We had some vacations and business travel and illness and we just didn't have many folks there. And we really didn't get much feedback on the draft one budget in the September meeting, which was kind of unfortunate because that, that led to the October, you know, fairly late in October, when we reviewed the draft two budget, that's when kind of all of the feedback came in. And the discussion went so long that we didn't finish in that meeting. And so we had to have a kind of special meeting or we moved the, the next board meeting up a week, if you recall, to kind of finish that budget discussion. So by that point, we're, you know, right at the beginning of November and don't have much time to get ready for the draft three or final budget, which also had some challenges with, you know, fiscal committee being able to weigh in and, you know, review that. Uh, we had some challenge with the reserve study and CIP being a little bit delayed. Our contractor was a little late on that. So that was a bit of a challenge. Uh, and we had a good bit of discussion, fiscal committee as well as the board, about the capital needs. You know, from the reserve study and just, we kind of know in general that we have a lot of pools that are gonna need renovation and other capital needs going forward. So, you know, there was concern and discussion about, you know, how best to fund that going forward and that's certainly gonna continue to be a topic going forward. Uh, and then, you know, sort of as I already mentioned, you know, there was kind of some challenges with the timing of fiscal committee meetings and board meetings and trying to get, you know, fiscal committee, the opportunity to review, uh, the budget drafts and get recommendations of the board and the board to be able to use those and kind of factor those in. We kind of ended up crunched there at the end due to, as I mentioned, you know, most of the feedback coming in those last couple of meetings, you know, late October and the one a week later. So that's kind of a quick recap of some successes and challenges. Uh, we will go to another slide and talk more about the going forward, but any questions or comments on that so far or anything you want to add? Matt, repeat? Any questions?
Um, I'm, I'm struck by the fact that the challenges don't list the fact that we got the comp study in September. And that certainly had a major impact on our ability to get things done and get decisions made. Obviously, we couldn't act on it in September. Obviously, we couldn't act on it in September and so that left us to be reacting to the comp study and at the October meeting. To me, that was the biggest challenge. And the inadequacy of the reserve study. I just found the reserve study to be unhelpful. Others may have a different view, but those two were really sand in the gears and I'm just, that they weren't listed as challenges, I would have, but it's your report.
Okay. Director Johnson?
Yeah. From my perspective, I thought the first item that you had listed as a challenge was probably one of our most significant challenges. We spent several weeks reviewing those member suggestions. Do you have any thoughts so far about how we can potentially present, well firstly, present the feedback to the board in a way that's probably more manageable than the way we had it? And secondly, a way to collect the suggestions from the members. You know, I think what we got was fairly wrong and maybe if we tightened up the method by which we asked the question, we could have, you know, I don't know, maybe guided the responses a bit better so we didn't get so many responses that were kind of out there that we had to cut off.
Right, yeah. So how about, we have an entire section on that, that exact topic. It's coming up.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome. Okay. Go ahead.
Why don't we go ahead and pull up the next slide? We're going to leave this slide up. This is, the touchpoints, you see this in each of our item summaries when we talk about the budget and what happens at each meeting, starting, you know, when things kick off with setting budget priorities in May and then working through different variable inputs. You remember in the summertime, we have member suggestions that come in, we start evaluating those. We also produce a staff memo that identifies the stopping or expanding of programs and significant budget variables, which leads into a second joint meeting in August with the fiscal committee and then into the creation of the first CEO proposed draft budget for review. So what we wanted to do, we gave you a series of questions in the agenda memo, but we don't intend to have a free-for-all. We thought it would be much better to structure the feedback into sections that are specifically like the member suggestion process. What are our thoughts? Do we have any ideas? Do you want to study changing it? You know, that sort of thing. And we tried to work these through rather than just kind of ping all around in as logical a process, you know, as we could. I'll give you a preview and then we'll, we'll start at the top. So this is the first year of a biennial budget, this next year's process, so twenty-five leading into twenty-six and twenty-seven. We want to talk about the nature of the two-year process and how we think about year two because we had a lot of trouble with that, this, on this biennial budget. We really only looked at the first year. So we want to talk about that and how much effort we want to put into year two. That's a big deal for this year's process looking forward. Want to talk about the CIP and we spent a fair amount of time as staff trying to put together some deliberate strategic ways that you can think about incorporating all the policy documents that you now have. Want to talk about how that process worked for you. So as we have community survey results now and we have reserve studies and we have a series of other things, we took a swing at that and Pete would like to talk to you about some, we're going to have, Pete, Ed and I are going to tag team this on sections. So we're going to talk about that. The, talking about the budget priorities and the, how you're making decisions and kind of what guideposts we should be looking at, particularly as we get into having enough time to evaluate and help you all as you look to make certain decisions and when you make those decisions. So when we set those priorities, you know, and how, and how you all want to adhere to them or use them. So we thought that would be a good section. The role of fiscal committee in general and what happens at each joint meeting. We have some observations about how many decisions are made or potentially not made or how you want to try to, you know, work through that. And then the overall calendar going forward. And the overall calendar is just very important because we're continually trying to make sure that we stay ahead of the curve. So if you have an expectation, we can make sure we hit, we hit that. So really, the biggest first question is back to this idea, this, we have a biennial budget. And I know when I first got here, it was the first, first, we were preparing, you know, the biennial budget for two years out. And I noticed that we did not spend any time, any meaningful time, I will say, with the biennial budget. And in other biennial budgets I have prepared, there's substantial amount of time and not that the second year becomes perfunctory, but it's more of a check, did everything happen the way it was supposed to happen in year one? But there's not as, nearly as much heavy lifting going into year two. What I observed here is because of the setting of the assessment, the association has historically, and I'm told this, but it certainly bore itself out of my experience, that, that every year is effectively a brand-new budget that starts over from scratch. And so the fiscal committee has asked me some questions and I have pondered this and want to talk to the board about the role of year two and how much time we should be spending. Going into this year's biennial budget, I imagine the operating expenses being relatively constant, you know, through both years. I don't imagine, I mean, unless the board takes wildly different priorities from where we're headed, you know, in, into twenty-five, like looking out to twenty-seven. But I do see the capital program potentially having significant changes as you get through this year and trying to implement a more refined look at the CIP and prioritization from the reserve study that just got done, you know, late last year. So there are sort of two questions. One is, do you all see value in spending substantial amounts of time on year two? And Bob may have some ideas on this too as treasurer. And part two, the biggest variable, as I see it, will be the CIP. If you were to make two-year CIP funding decisions, that would make year two of the budgeting process substantially easier because you would have already set the number for year two of the CIP. And, and the operating expenses become relatively straightforward. So I want to see what your thoughts are on that and just not leave it as an open-ended question because we're putting together the calendar and we found last time that we ran out of time to have a meaningful conversation about year two. And if you, if you're all wanting to do that, I want to make sure I build the calendar accordingly.
Any comments, any questions on this?
Well, I'll just kick off the discussion. From my perspective, with a board that turns over about a third in theory every year, having a two-year process or a two-year budgeting process really is tough because it neglects a third of the board that's going to have thoughts, opinions and ideas that they would like to implement. So I, I haven't seen it be as effective. It doesn't mean it can't be. And I think a good suggestion is if, the way by, a two-year budget could be incredibly successful and easy if you were able to figure out the CIP, but it does handcuff the incoming board substantially. And so that, from that perspective, I would rather operate on a single year, but that was just my experience.
Yes.
A question for counsel. Where's the two-year budget come from? Is it a product of one of the governing documents?
Yes.
Yes, it's from the deed. I'm sorry? It's in the deed.
Okay. So unless we amend the deed, we're stuck with that process?
Even if we didn't, I guess we could kind of collectively nod and just say we wouldn't spend as much time moving forward on the second year, right? We put, we just put numbers there to fulfill the requirement, but.
Mr. President, my impression, and I, you know, I've read through this budget and I have a different experience, lived experience than what's described in this memo, but I don't think we need to litigate those differences. But we did do, two years ago, a second-year budget that was a skeleton second-year budget. I'm not going to try and suggest that it was a detailed thought, but there was a two-year budget and there was a projection, as I think on the prior slide it showed that the projected budget for the second year or assessment for the second year was going to be eight, sixty-seven or something. So that came from the budget deliberations and the year before this, we, we didn't adopt a budget until December is my memory and it was at a special meeting. So that we got a budget adopted and, I mean, to me, that's one of the great successes is we weren't sitting around here in December trying to figure out what the assessment was. We got it done on the nineteenth of November, is that my memory correct? So that's, that's progress, but I, I don't think we're going to be able to avoid, at the very least, having a skeleton second-year budget because I'm not interested in amending the deed to change that. There, you know, it's just a process, a referendum process to make that change is just more than I think we want to bite off.
Yep.
I think.
Your honor.
I think it largely depends on the quality of the information we have regarding what will be the CIP for the second year. And if we're guessing at that, then that's what we're going to be doing. And if we have more detailed information or definite plans and we have a good handle on what we can expect in terms of increasing costs, then it might make sense.
Director Johnson?
Thanks. I'm actually very interested in hearing what Mr. Patrino has to say about this. In terms of the biennial budget, I think I agree with John Farrell that it, it ought to be retained. It's not worth trying to change the deed to accommodate it. In fact, I could, I could see and it's been, we've discussed it a number of times at the fiscal committee of extending at least directionally a budget out five years. And to at least put markers in the sand as to what could happen. And to, number one, and number two, to inform the members about the direction of the assessment because it's going to be driven by two factors. The operating budget, which has been fairly stable, people can argue about it, but the capital, capital improvement plans or the renovation plans are, have been the bugaboo. And the reason that the resolution for the ten-year average was brought about was so that you've forced the organization to adequately reserve for its capital needs going forward. The challenge is, how accurate is that number? Because for the biggest, the biggest event has been COVID and how that, number one, increased the cost of repairs immeasurably and decreased the number of potential contractors so there's less competition for, for people to do the work. But that doesn't mean that you can't provide the membership more information about the direction. And personal opinion is that's where the, that's where the money to run this organization is coming from. That won't change. Unless you change the strategic direction and focus of this organization, the members will be paying the lion's share of both the operating expenses and whatever capital improvement. If you want to keep fifteen pools open, it's going to increase incrementally just to operate them, let alone to repair them over time. That is not to say that people, that the staff has done a bad job, no. In fact, they've done a remarkable job in keeping the quality of the facilities at a very high level. And they've been very diligent in making repairs when they need to be repaired. I could wax on for hours, I'm afraid, about the finances.
Laura, did you have something?
I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. So I wanted to, from my point of view, one of the most challenging aspects of the budgetary process was the way in which the two hundred member comments were handled. And the fact is that we didn't have, we've seen a lot of reasons that that was difficult. I like the idea of asking members to give, give feedback in a form that helps us categorize those things. At the same time, I know that I was always one of those people who would fill out a form and I wouldn't stick to categories. So I think that the, the benefit of that has to be understood to be partial, but having a genuine organization of where those member comments come and dealing with them in groups that made sense would have saved a lot of our time and having that available in a way that was easy to refer to, all the cross-referencing slowdowns became very frustrating. So I think that, again, the getting two hundred suggestions suggests that the members are aware that our board is responsive to suggestions. And so that is a major thing that I'm proud of. And yet, keeping them organized, I like the idea of seeking to categorize them despite how imperfect that will be.
In regards to what Lori was saying, I commend the communications team for making sure that everyone was aware of how to do this. I think the hiccup was in the way the data was processed on the backend. There should have been some scrubbing because a lot of them were actually recommendations that could have, that were handled at administrative level that this board probably should have never been previewed to, to save some time and focus on big-ticket issues. And I think they should have been categorized in like, seven members said this specific theme. Because I believe that if we went line item by line item, that leads us to then become operational and if we want to remain at a governance level, then we need to hit on themes. So I would welcome perhaps, and here's a suggestion, getting feedback starting in February, before the annual meeting in April, giving a readout to the membership of what was said so far, quickly responding to the membership and saying, we've heard you and a lot of these are going to be taken care of because it's under our budget currently for this year. And then that way, we're being responsive and that way, we know that this team is being responsive as well. So I would encourage some thought process that's to some level of that sequence.
Let me get Director Perry first.
Can I say point of order because we got off topic? Our CEO asked us about the two-year budget cycle and I love the, I, the comments on member questions, but we're talking about the two-year budget cycle first.
So I might be able to, I'm hearing, I mean, and if everybody wants to weigh in, sounds good, but I'm already hearing a common theme that the relationship of changing out board members and not wanting to make too many out-year decisions too quickly is a significant factor for the board. And, and so what I really wanted to do is just get a sense of where you were all at with that because it takes, I mean, you see how long it takes to produce a budget, to produce two years' worth of budget is not quite double, but it's a significant amount. Just to give everybody a point of reference, the, the budget for year two isn't skeletal, it's just literally a percentage increase. It's a small percentage in operating, you know, and it might be five or eight percent, you know, somewhere else, which adds up to a somewhat fictitious number. What I think we have had trouble with is explaining that's a somewhat fictitious number compared to, why are we changing from that year-two budget? Because there's a public perception that we did this, all this deliberate thought. And then if there's a wild fluctuation, then we have just the, like, how did that happen conversation? And I can work on that, that part. But I think what I might suggest is unless someone feels really strongly that you would like to have, like, two budgets being done concurrently, I think I'm hearing, you'd like to talk about multi-years of CIP, I get that, but not really develop a full second year budget. I have not heard anybody say that you want that.
Hold on just a second. Let me get Director Perry, she's had her hand up for a while and I'll come back to you guys. Director Perry, go ahead.
Two, two things, I guess. One is, I think Lori and Izzy's suggestions are good suggestions regardless of whether they're out of order or not. My only concern would be that we as a board don't slap staff's hands for scrubbing things, right? Like if, if they've made a decision that this is supposed to go somewhere, we need to trust our staff and not be slapping them on the hand for that. But second, as far as, you know, the deed, you know, we have the opportunities to, to review the deed, to make changes to the deed. We have a process for it. If this is something that needed to be done, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be added. And, you know, we've already discussed that should deed amendments need to be done per our current, you know, conversations we've been having anyway. You know, we had already agreed that those would happen during the normal, regular election that goes out to everyone, recognizing of course that it does require a percentage of the membership to get out and vote and be active. of the membership to get out and vote and be active. So, you know, I don't think any change is impossible. And I think that if it's something that, you know, the board or staff or the membership feel is important, it's something we need to consider, because we do have a process for that.
Okay, thank you. Listen, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and I just want to bring the focus back to the topic that, that our CEO just brought up. Can we just focus on that instead of just getting off on different topics here, please? Director Farrell, go ahead.
So, going back to the two-year budget, I don't think we have a choice.
Well, no, I don't mean to suggest that we're not going to do a second year. That's not, that's not, what I'm trying to get a sense for the board is, do you want us spending the same amount of time developing year two as we're doing developing year one? Because that requires a substantial amount of, of effort and more decision-making time, as compared to what we've done in the past, which is to add a percentage so that there is a placeholder and certainly deed compliance and that other sort of thing.
Reclaiming my floor, Mr. President. That's, I, I think that's what we've done, what we continue to do. With regard to the CIP, my, and I'd have to go back and look at it, we adopted a five-year CIP when I was in your chair. I intended to adopt the five-year CIP this past year, with the understanding that the CIP gets revisited every year, based on what, what we find out needs to be done. And that changes from year to year as our facilities age. So, in, in some regards, I, I don't, I think that the CIP element of the second-year budget is, to a very large degree, fixed by the, the five-year CIP that we adopt. So, you know, will there be changes to the CIP when we go through the process again? I hope so, because we need to be responsive to the conditions of our facilities as we go from year to year. But it's, but the two-year budget, I, I think we have to have the two-year budget. I think it can be a sketch, I don't think it needs to be more than a sketch. But we, when we adopt the CIP, we, we're looking out five years. And so the membership has a pretty decent idea as to what we're gonna, what, what capital improvements we're gonna make. So I think we're okay with, with the process that we have now. And if any other member of the board disagrees with me on, on those two questions, then I want to keep it to those two questions.
I just want to add that I think that in the, you have to have some flexibility in the, in the second-year budget, because you need to leave room for innovation, for changes, for projects to come up. We're not anticipated in the course of the preparation of the budget for the first year or the second year. And so it's, it's hard to come up with a really hard budget that you're going to live and die by.
Thank you. Let me get Director Josh out first.
I think the way that we do the two-year budget cycle that we have in the past is fine. I would, in addition to adding, you know, an inflationary factor or whatever you think those fee increases may be for the second year, that guess, is you need to remove, obviously, one-year projects that wouldn't be in the second year. And if you have ideas for projects for that second year that you need to put in, by all means, please put them in. Beyond, beyond that high level, I think that gives us an indication of what that second-year trend would look like. I think what the association is missing is, is that five-year outlook. And I think that Mr. Butler and Mr. Schumaker put in place that five-year capital plan because we were missing this five-year outlook. And they did it four, maybe four years ago now. I think that was a great addition. I think that needs to be kept of looking at that five-year outlook. I would love to see some type of, you know, forecasting trend on the operational side as well, because it's difficult, as a board, to make a decision on this year, not, not really knowing what we, where we think the direction is going to go. Is it like a steady lineup? Is it like a little bumpy road? Like, we don't, we don't know what that looks like, so we're left guessing on this year's budget. So I, that's the piece that I would be most interested in, is not just keeping the second year the way we are, but, or the way we have done, but kind of even forecasting out farther than that.
Director Johnson.
Do we have record of us doing the budget differently in previous years? Like, is there a point when we started doing the two-year budget in the way that we do it now? Or have we always done it this way?
I'm going to hazard a guess it's always been done this way, for all the reasons that everyone's alluding to. But I only know probably going back three cycles or so.
Okay, so, we, so, so there's no data that would show a previous year that had a different process? Okay.
It hasn't changed in the past five years.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Did you get this?
Okay, very good. Since there was so much interest, why don't we just jump into member suggestions? And Ed's going to walk us through some stuff on this one.
Okay, probably the one thing that we can all agree on is there was definitely room for improvement in the member suggestion process last year. I mean, we were overwhelmed by the number of them, and, you know, we tried, we as staff, to do some, you know, initial prioritization, tried to help the board with their decision-making process. But I think, in some cases, we gave you prioritization and we were scrubbing ones out that you didn't want us to, but then in other cases, we weren't scrubbing ones out that you wanted us to. So we were kind of missing the mark, and somehow, we want to improve that process. So, you know, the first step in the process is, how are we going to collect these? And, you know, we put some things in the memo here, and we, we haven't discussed in detail this, so we don't have, you know, the plan yet. But this is just some initial discussion, and we're not going to solve it all tonight. But, you know, the first step is, how are we going to reach out to the members and try and get suggestions, maybe in some more methodical way, whether it's by program or facility or whatever, to get some feedback that'll be easier for, you know, all of us to digest and prioritize at that point? So, you know, kind of before we move on, any initial thoughts on, you know, how we might do that more effectively?
Go ahead. Yeah, so it seems like the process to, to collect worked. I mean, we got 200 responses. So I, I wouldn't make radical changes to that. My, my suggestion would be, again, as Izzy said, it's what we do on the backend.
I'm sorry, what?
And what we do on the backend. And you said that your process included prioritization, and I'd recommend categorization and then prioritization. So then, so basically, you're, you're prioritizing the categories. It gives you fewer things to have to prioritize, and it gives us the opportunity to look at the list that's been prioritized and maybe make some changes as necessary, without going deep into the data and pulling out, you know, line items about, you know, just random maintenance things around the, the association.
How about the voting? Like, do you like a spreadsheet where you do a red, yellow, green?
I did not, no.
I mean, that, you know, that had been done previously, so we kind of copied that.
Yeah.
I wasn't that wild about it either, but I don't know if you have other suggestions or if there's longer ago history here of what might have worked.
Yeah, red, yellow, and green may have worked had, well, you know, let me, let me step back. I didn't like it with the number of rows that we had. I didn't think it was helpful. If we'd had it with a more limited dataset, it might have been a little more helpful. Also would have been more helpful if the data that we had, the spreadsheet that we had, was filterable, so we could sort the list and make it a bit easier to read. So if you had different fields rather than colors, then, you know, you could click on, you know, whatever category you wanted to look at. And then we can make the list look shorter for ourselves and a bit more manageable. I mean, some of the, some of this stuff is getting into the weeds, and I'd be happy to have this conversation offline, but, but yeah, I, I think there are a number of things that we, we could do to take the data and, you know, put it in buckets and prioritize those buckets.
Go ahead.
I think part of this, we solved when we were going through it. I think it took us two meetings to figure out what the key was that staff was using. And so if you could put a key, literally a key at the bottom, that says, "Number one from staff means this, number two from staff means this," because it took us a few meetings to figure out what, what your rating, how you were doing your rating system for us. I, I do disagree with some of my fellow directors that staff going through the list and administratively taking some of them out because they'd be taken care of is something that we should do. I feel very obligated, because I'm voted in by members that, and these are member suggestions, and the, the board owns the budget, that I need to be able to see all of the ones, all of the suggestions that come in from members. I think it's our, our job to make those determinations as to whether they go in the budget. But the biggest, I think, issue was, we were not sure, some, some staff ended up thinking, "Well, these are just maintenance items, we will, we will, you know, put them in our budget." We didn't know that for two meetings. It was not until the third meeting that we understood the mindset of staff. And so I think that key would go a long way for us to understand your rating system. I also think that the, although there were 200 suggestions and going through that red, green, red, yellow, green rating system certainly took me time as a board member, I'd much rather do that behind the scenes on my own time than come to a board meeting and have all nine of us comment on every suggestion that's on the, on the list. At least the ratings, our rating system gave us an idea of, you know, four or five board members or nine board members are interested in this, whereas only one is. So I, I thought that it was worth the time outside of the, the meeting to, to get that feedback from my fellow board members and know which ones we would probably have to have discussions about when we got to the meeting. Thanks.
My only suggestion, I'm fine. I, I thought the process of seeing all 200 was insightful and helpful. Yes, I think we did go through a grouping exercise, even with those 200, that was helpful. My only recommendation for the body moving forward is, I won't be doing it next year, but it's, when you make final decisions, or I encourage the board to be making final decisions throughout the process and as early as possible, so that you're not revisiting items that you thought you had declared dead in May that then reappear in September. And we did that a few different times, and there's always different scenarios as to why they come up and why they're coming back. But I think, I think there was, some of the, some of the members of the board were demoralized at times, thinking we had moved past a particular item in a May session or in a June session or in some sort of summer session, only to find that to come back in a fall session. And so that's, that's just the, the body having to keep itself in check.
Except that, how would we accomplish that? Wouldn't we need to, to make final decisions earlier? We'd have to have a motion that passed, because there are some people who think that we've parked something, and it's an issue that remains of concern to them, so they bring it back up. If we haven't held a vote, then no decision has been made, even if...
So that's where the stoplight system comes into play, right? So if things get moved into the red category, then we would make an overarching motion on all things in red, that they are done for this budget cycle, right?
I don't think that would have helped.
You could, and, and it's my recommendation, right? I'm not going to be here to try to enforce it. But the point is, is that this body continues to bog itself down in key moments in the fall because of its inability to decipher and make tough decisions in the summer. And that's fine, you can keep doing that forever, but it's just, it's exhausting for staff, it's exhausting for members of the board, and it can be solved earlier. It really, it can be, because it's, the, the information is in front of you in May and June.
I'm going to give you one recommendation and hopefully close this part of the discussion. Start early, and if you have some ideas based on what you have heard, run some test cases. Get some members involved and get some feedback early on. Don't wait until July, August to go through that process real time. Do it earlier, and then just iron out what the issues are, anything that doesn't make sense. The key is different, people don't understand the key. I had a hard time understanding the key. I didn't know what the red was, what the yellow was, and so on. It took me some time. We don't want to go through that real time as we're doing the budget. I would recommend strongly that you think about identifying two or three, four options, whatever you want. Just test them out. Get some of us to come into your office and just have a look and say, "What do you think about this?" You have the last word, Director Farrell.
I'm sorry?
You have the last word.
I, I didn't want to cut off discussion. I, I think the characterization of the process this past year that I've heard earlier tonight was not accurate. I'm not going to, again, relitigate what happened this past year. Motions were made to direct staff to come up with a number on a particular item. That motion was defeated. That wasn't a motion to say, "We never want to think about it again." It was simply, "We're not going to direct staff to price out this item." That's different, and I encourage anybody who thought it was different, who thought that things were being revisited, go read the minutes.
It's a single...
I beg your pardon, I am not yielding the floor. And, and so, the process that's being described tonight is not the process that was made in motions, continuing. The red, green, blue, I mean, red, green, yellow process was a disaster. Some of us designated something as yellow because we needed to know more about what the, what the member was suggesting. It wasn't that we were rejecting it, it was that, "Well, I don't understand this, tell me more about what the suggestion is." And when I went through and said, "Okay, this one has four green, or that one has three green, or that one has two green," and then nothing happens with the ones that have four or three or two. Okay, how did we count the yellow? Did we count the yellow as yes, we're interested, or did we count the yellow as no, we're not? And so it was, when, when we looked at what, what came out of that red, red, yellow, green process, it was like, how did these decisions get made? They were incomprehensible. It was totally opaque as to, okay, if we had four green votes or five green votes, three yellow votes, okay, we're dropping it if we only had. So that doesn't work. And somehow, we need to be able to communicate that, on that. The other point is, Mr. President, is that if there was a, a expectation on one of those 200, that it was truly an administrative item, that didn't get into the footnote out, in that column on explanations as to why it wasn't recommended for going forward. The last thing I'll say, and I'll yield the floor, we consciously made a decision to keep the suggestions open until July last year, because it's a recognition that fundamentally, during the winter, the, the members aren't using our facilities, they're closed. And that the members use our facilities in the spring. And that's when they experience the facilities, and that's when they figure out that, gee whiz, maybe something needs to get fixed or something needs to be improved. And so to say to the members, "Well, give me a suggestion in February," well, they haven't been using our facilities for, in large measure, four or five months. And so to say to them, "Well, tell me what you think ought to happen now in February," that's why there was a conscious decision made to do it in, to have the cutoff in July, so that the members would have an opportunity to actually experience the facilities and give us suggestions. So...
Thank you.
Just to explain how, why we got there last year.
Okay, thank you. I think we, we, this, this one to death here. So you've got some...
Okay, we, we will work on some additional administrative ideas to try to help you all, you know, when we, we get to this.
Thank you.
One more timing thing that will come up when you adopt the budget calendar. This didn't become a huge issue this year, but one of the things about extending the timing to July, when we get to the overall calendar, we, that did not allow for some of those suggestions to make it to a committee. So the role of the committees in making recommendations to you, you know, some were able to bypass the committee, some came with a recommendation not to do from the committee, so that administratively became two different subsets that were not really being filtered, you know, equally, in terms of how the association looked at member suggestions, so. But think about that for when we get to the actual calendar in March. All right, let's talk a little bit about the CIP and some of the decision-making process there.
Hang on just a second here.
I have a motion, so go, go for it before, go.
I'll be brief, I think we have 15 agenda items left tonight, so I'll, I'll try to keep it moving. I've sat now through two budget cycles, and the CIP has been a significant pain point in both. Not, no one's fault, not pointing any fingers either direction. I think one of the things that plagues us is... of the things that plagues us is, as a group, we're interested in what's going into the CIP, the projects that are going to be done to protect the association's assets. But the funding model is maybe outdated or maybe just needs revisiting. There are different models out there. I tried to detail one very briefly in the memo to talk about something called CRV or current replacement value. Everything that we own has a current replacement value. Over the years, that will inflate due to inflation or decrease, but slightly decrease. There are methods out there to fund your CIP by a percentage of your current replacement value. And what that does is take sort of the guesswork out of what you're going to contribute to your CIP and lets you focus more on what's going to be included from a project perspective in the CIP. So the reason I'm bringing this up is, for Ed and I to sort of model this out along with maybe some different options, will be a somewhat significant effort. But I would be interested in bringing it back maybe at the May joint meeting with the fiscal committee to allow the fiscal committee some time to look at it. We would work jointly with them throughout the process. But if, if, if we were to go a different way, we also have a resolution that says we should fund to a 10-year average. So there's a resolution change as well. So if we're going to go down this road, I think it's at least worth exploring for us to look at a different model. But I wanted to just maybe get some head nods from the board as far as, are you willing to look at this, think about this in May so that when we come back, we're, we're having that conversation? If we're not, then fine. But Director Farrell is nodding his head, but maybe one or two other head nods would be helpful for me. Just because I think if we could get to a place as a group where we're not arguing about the amount that's going into the CIP, we're having a different conversation about what we're tackling in the CIP, I think we can be a little bit more effective. I also think there's a conversation to be had about, we do a lot in the CIP that's maintenance-related. If we put new grass at a baseball field, or maybe we're replacing some totlot swings, those are really maintenance projects. Or if we come to a pool, that's a three and a half, $4 million project. That, that's truly a capital project. So maybe are we funding in two different pots of money? I don't know. But I'd like to maybe explore some of these things and bring them back in May.
Point of order here. Could you please keep the conversation low? Your mic is open. We're trying to listen to what they're saying, but we can hear you.
Please.
Thank you.
That hurt my ear.
Go ahead.
That's it. So that's, if the board is open to listening to some new ideas at the joint meeting with fiscal in May, I think it would be helpful for us to bring some of those back. So as we head into the 25-budget season, maybe we can look at it differently.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right.
I, I'd like to motion to direct the CEO to bring back multiple triple RF funding alternatives, along with a staff and fiscal committee recommendation to the board by May of 2025.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Those against? Director Perry, how do you vote?
Abstaining.
There's abstaining. Abstaining, okay.
You have a motion.
I abstain.
On that motion, we have 702. That motion passes.
I have a question.
Yeah?
One of the things that we're having a sidebar with Director Dodd is that we have a situation, and I don't know where it is, and maybe counsel can tell me, where anything over $5,000 is considered a capital bu- budget item. I think that goes to what Mr. Lusk was talking about earlier, where it's over five grand. It really isn't capital improvement. It's really maintenance. But because it's over five grand, we have to approve it as part of the capital budget. It seems to me we need to fix that. And I don't know where it is, and maybe counsel can tell me where that is. But it's possible that maybe what we want to do is change that number so that we're not, we're not, we're not looking at super umbrellas as a board item.
Director Johnson, you hope?
Yeah. I actually had intended to ask a similar question. So is that difference documented, the 5,000 versus anything else? We've got that documented? Is there a process by which we change that?
Well, it's what I was asking counsel.
Is that what you're asking?
It's a, it would be a resolution change, wouldn't it?
No, it's not in the resolution. It's a, it's an internal fiscal policy. It's your capitalization policy that sets that. And it's been in place for a while. So staff could bring back a recommendation to change the capitalization policy.
So that was going to be my motion, was to direct staff to come back with a recommendation to change that $5,000 number with the object of reducing the number of items that are in the capital budget that really are capital budget items.
Okay.
And, and really to come up with. And I, I know in the-
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
In speaking to it.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to add, add an amendment.
I, I, just in a second, I'd be happy to add a, add a ten and amendment. I know that there are accounting standards, Mr. Vroom, on what constitutes a capital item. And I don't think that's a $5,000 number. I think it's a, a different number. And so, however we go about reducing the number of items in our capital budget that are of a small dollar figure, I'd like to have some recommendations on that. You had a proposed amendment?
I would say along, along with bringing back a, a proposed adjustment, to also bring back the material to explain the effects of our financials on that recommendation.
I'm happy.
Because, yeah.
I'd ask for unanimous consent to, to agree to that amendment to my motion.
Do we have unanimous consent?
Because it, it does affect appreciation and things like that on our financials.
Director Perry? Did I hear you?
In the audit.
Okay. Thank you. So on that motion, all those in favor say aye. Or, I'm sorry, on the amended motion, I should say. All those in favor say aye.
It was like three of you.
Yeah. Yeah. Director Johnson seconded that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstaining?
I once again abstain because I'm tired of constantly feeling we have to make motions for staff to do what we know they will do. Thank you.
Motion passes 801. Thank you.
Can we clarify that, that, will that come back in May, or did you want another month? I don't know that we put a date on that one.
May.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think we are done with the-
With that topic, yeah. This will be the last one.
Yes.
So in terms of the overall calendars, we put this up, you know, over here. One of the things that we tried last year, and I'm just going to throw out some procedural things that we did. We, for the first time, gave you all one-on-one briefings in an attempt to answer any operational questions so that the board would have more efficient, you know, board meetings. Some of you took advantage of that, some did not. We're looking for some feedback on some of those sorts of things. When we went into setting budget priorities, you know, in May, some of you made some suggestions, some wanted to make motions, some said, no, we shouldn't take motions. So we're looking for some feedback on the decision-making process and how we can help you all. So in short, in May, you set your budget priorities. That really sets the guideposts upon which we are making staff decisions to bring back to you. So for example, if it is a budget priority of the board not to exceed a particular number, that was a suggestion that was thrown out but not agreed upon at the board, it would be good to know that earlier rather than later. If it is a priority of the board to reduce the operating budget, it would be good to know that sooner rather than later so we can build, you know, build the model. So those decisions typically we're, we're aiming for earlier in the process. We did this year, you know, in May, obviously had some fluctuation, you know, later in the process on a few of those things. And then the other big structural piece is the joint meetings. So are we getting what we want out of the joint meetings with fiscal? Because we have observed that there have not necessarily been as many decisions. So for example, the member suggestion decisions, you know, in August, we just had a lengthy decision, or lengthy discussion, you know, on that. And Bob may want to weigh in on behalf of the fiscal committee because there may be some thoughts, thoughts there. And Jennifer, too, you know, as a liaison. So those were really the topics. And I'm just looking to set the final, as Ed and I try to put together the, the final calendar, there are some other ideas. If it would be helpful, I mean, this would be totally different than stuff we've done in the past, we can look at accelerating when we publish draft one. So we put that in, in the memo. That accelerates other timelines that I have to figure out how to make work, you know, member suggestions and fiscal meetings, and one we can put together program memo, you know, that. But, but I'd be interested in some feedback if that would be helpful and how you can all kind of storm a norm into, you know, that, that cultural understanding of what happens at each meeting.
Director Johnson?
Yeah. I'd like it, I'd like us to, to set a resolution for, early in the process that lays out what our goal and priority is for the year. Because, you know, as far as last year went, I don't think, you know, I, I think what, what it looked like to me was that a limited number of the board made a decision on what they wanted the goal to be late in the process and ended up making some, pushing along some changes towards in the last few weeks rather than, you know, working through the entire process. I'd like us to, to, to put it to paper early on, whatever our goal is. And if it's, you know, something that, you know, the, the entire board doesn't agree on, let's get that documented too. But let's get it out there that, what the board's goals and priorities are so we can work towards that the entire year. And Matt can give us a budget that is consistent with those goals early on, and we don't have to go back and do multiple iterations.
I believe that we are always in October going to have motions related to the budget. I think that's just the way it's going to have to work, and we're all going to have to accept that that's the way it's going to work. Could we have provided more guidance to staff at the end of September if we were all meeting? Sure. I think that we could. I think we ran into some challenges that were already mentioned earlier that were unforeseeable. And so some of the guidance we would have, or questions we would have asked in September didn't necessarily get asked. But I do believe it takes board members four to six weeks after you see a budget to really analyze it, think about your, you know, the, the inputs that you've had all year, and what then you would kind of believe are the, the targets that should move within that budget. And then it takes you some time to talk to your fellow board members to say, hey, this is what I was thinking. Are you thinking that? And then to reach out to members on, like, the member suggestions that I knew came from South Lakes, like, I was reaching out to those. It's going to take us four to six weeks to truly understand the ramifications of a budget. If we move it and we get a first draft budget in August, then we end up having to limit our members in giving us suggestions. And we can't have a, a deadline as late as July. So from my perspective, I've accepted that, you know, I'll take the member suggestions as long as, as, you know, we can cut them off. And it seems like July is, is pretty, is pretty late or as far as we can move it in order to get a budget approved in November. But we have to understand, like, that, that end of September meeting is always going to be trying to get our head around what, what is even in the budget and what those numbers are. And then the next meeting that we have is, okay, I've looked at it a little bit more. And the third meeting is, I think that I have gone and figured out where I can get consensus among other board members to throw out motions. So I, I would like to leave the budget timing alone, and I don't want staff to feel like because a lot of those motions come in October that that's a bad thing. I think that that's an, it's, it's an okay thing, and, and you guys are giving us what we need in order to make those decisions.
Director Johnson?
Yeah. I don't object to the last-minute motions. I really don't. I know that they're necessary for the reasons that Director Johnson just outlined. I just want to make sure that all those pros, all of those motions are traceable to other board actions and we can map back. We can map our thought process, and, which, which basically at the end of the day shows our membership how we came to the conclusion. So if we start off and say that our goal is X, but our goal ends up being, but our end budget ends up being Z, you know, we'll, we'll have a process that shows how we got from X to Z. I want to make sure that all of that is above the board and traceable.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
When are we going to start informing the board about large-ticket items that came out of the reserve study? And when is that going to be implemented in a budget?
So I guess, that's a good question. I guess it really depends on what, what it is. So I think, I was talking a little bit earlier about the pool replacements, and we've talked about it at fiscal a little bit. I think coming to some determination on how accurate the years are that the pools are listed in the CIP is, is one. It's a hill we have to climb. We've had conversations about it, but it's a hill we have to climb. Let's not forget also that there was funding for doing a pools condition assessment. We started that process a couple days ago, trying to get that moving. So we, I think it would be best served to bring that information back to the board first to say, here's what the condition assessment showed us. This is what the reserve study said. Here's what the funding could be moving forward. So I think, I think that's the first trigger. But again, I'm, I'm kind of putting a lot of stock into the May meeting. I would like to get as, as much information about the capital program to the May meeting as possible.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right.
Okay. So the next steps are, you will have a draft budget calendar. It should be in one of your March meetings. We'll incorporate today's feedings, a discussion, and talk about, you know, any adjustments to timing and our expectations at each checkpoint.
So it's good.
I have a question. This was not addressed, but it was in your memo and it was admitted in the verbal. I wanted to respond to the fact that you asked, should board members should be treated differently in the member comments? And my answer is no, they should just be all together. So I just want that to be noted since that was glossed over.
Okay. That, that was new, just because we wanted to make sure they were highlighted out, you know, as much as anything. And we also talked about board member comments sort of bypassing committee recommendations because they were board member suggestions. When we get to the member suggestions process, however you want those categorized or clumped, happy to, to work that through at the time.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready for in our, I'm sorry, elections, election ballots and voter guides, correct? Who's going to do that? Brittany or Richard or both?
Margaret.
Margaret is. Okay. Sorry. Sorry, Margaret. You're on mute.
You're being on mute.
You're on mute.
I would like to request to buy a break. It is 9:00 PM.
Sure.
We've been here two and a half hours already, and this is going to, I would like to not miss this, please.
Sure. No problem. Let's, let's break for 10 minutes, and we will reconvene at 10 past 9:00.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I believe at this point we are ready for the election ballots and voter guides. Is Margaret back on? Yeah. Okay.
Yes, so each year the Elections Committee examines the form content validation and coding of the election ballot and voting guide. This year they made two suggested changes to the ballot. One was to incorporate options for voters to select whether or not they are new or returning. This was based off of a motion Director Santa made at the September 12th Board Meeting in 2024 for us to capture metrics on voter behavior. And so this was one way we thought that they could implement that. The other was creating the creation of a new voter code. And this was based out of staff getting input and data and feedback from the tenant information that was part of Board and Operations Resolution 17. Excuse me. And in reviewing that data, we found that our classification for our coding didn't cover certain parameters of voters who are owners and occupants of their Reston Association properties, but also have a tenant that resides in the home with them, which would create an issue for vote counts because as an owner occupant, you are considered a Category A and C member and therefore allotted two votes. But with the addition of another occupant, which is technically a Category C member and should receive a vote, it created a dilemma of that category or that that unit having three votes as opposed to the two votes that is what is precedent. So because of that, the committee reviewed that information and came up with a new voter code, which is OT for owner with tenant, so that we knew when we get these kind of ballots in or the accounting agency received those ballots, they know how to count those votes properly. And so that is just the two changes that they implemented and put on the new ballot, which they are recommending for board approval. I have the Elections Committee Chair here, Richard Chu, so that if the committee has or the board has any questions, he's here to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. Director Johnson?
Yeah, so.
Turn your mic on. Yeah, thanks.
So my understanding, looking at this, is that an OT, where the assumption here is that there would be an OT and TN in the same house, correct? Okay, so that's where the the two votes would come in. So in the event that, say, the TN doesn't vote, should the OT get both votes then? Or is, how would that work?
So the ballots that are going out to those units, because the OT, the owner occupant, has provided us with their tenant's name, would receive the ballot in their name. So the owner wouldn't be able to use their ballot to vote. There are some particular cases where if they haven't provided us with a renter name, the committee determined that we still will send them a ballot, but it will be under the current resident or current occupant title that we have been using previously in our past elections.
I guess my concern, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is that there seems to be, it doesn't seem to be entirely fair to the OT in comparison to like an OO, for instance, who lives alone and would also have two votes. But because they've taken on a renter, then they've kind, they've given up a vote?
Richard, if you wanted to speak to that.
Richard, can you come to the microphone?
First blame Bob.
I always do.
Okay, because the the whole issue is two votes per lot, okay? So if you have an A and a C living in the, an A, you could be an A and a C, okay? A Category A and a Category C. You and your spouse could split the vote and one of you decides to be the A category and the other decides to be the C category, but it would still be two votes, okay? If you live alone, you get two votes, lucky you. If it, if you live in an apartment, the renter, the tenant gets one vote and the owner of the apartment complex gets a vote for you. That's how we determine how many, what the vote totals are for a Category B. And that's how we determine, you know, tenants. Now, we don't go to the step, to the extent of saying, we need a name for every tenant. And one of the things that the excellent work by staff has done to identify, to clarify the voter rolls has been, we have some issues out there, okay? And so we're trying to deal with those issues as they come up. There are going to be lessons learned. We're going to do a lot better this year. Probably next year we'll do better in terms of identifying these anomalies that are out there. And, you know, it may be that this OT TN thing is not ideal, but in order to get through into this election, we had to come up with a solution. There are people who say, I own three properties, I should get six votes. But that's not what the deed says. The deed says owner occupied. So if you own three properties and you, we can, we can tell whether you, who, which property you live in, and one of them isn't your summer home, okay? I mean, but these are all things that were discovered.
Sure. Director Doug, did you have a comment?
And Ed and team have done yeoman's work in terms of trying to get us to closer to perfection.
Director Doug.
Well, but what Brittany said also is in part responsive to Trevor to the point that if an owner occup, if if someone is classified as OT and they have not given a name of a tenant, and perhaps it's because the tenant has moved out or whatever, and and so if then, if they haven't given a name of a tenant, then as you said, Brittany, something would come to them to say, uh, current resident. And so if there's no one else there to receive the mail, then that owner who is now an owner occupier because they don't have a tenant could vote both ballots. Is there anything to prevent that from happening?
No. And the part of the reason we are encouraging Category A members, even if they don't have a tenant, to complete this form every year is because you may not have a tenant this year, but you may next year. And so your voter code will change based on your current situation, and we won't know that unless we're provided with the information. So like I said, some, in some cases, we've been, you know, made aware that I no longer have a tenant, and they were an ABMG at one point, and they moved back into their RA property. So this, you know, though the information may fluctuate, especially with a community as diverse as Reston, I mean, there's just so many different variations of feedback that we've gotten from members, some even saying, you know, technically I'm an OO, but I'm not currently living in my home because it's being renovated.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, those kind of things we bring to the committee.
Yeah.
And, you know, confirm with them, do you agree that this is how they should be classified or quoted so that we have the information as accurate in our system as possible?
So I also have one other question. I'm sorry. And I, I commend the staff and the committee for all of this work. I think this, this looks like a vast improvement to me. My question is that I saw from the information that was provided that it sounds like 1,500 of those Resolution 17 forms came in identifying that someone does have a tenant. Is that, and so I'm curious whether we expected more, whether we think there are more, do we have any thought?
I mean, I could clarify a little, and there was a bit of an error in my memo there. We actually got a little over 3,000 responses.
Oh, okay.
There was a little over 1,500 that were on paper and then another little over 1,500 that were electronic, so a little over 3,000. But that is less than a 20% response rate because if you take all the OO owners and the ABMG owners, it's 17,000 and change. So, you know, it's, it's less than 20%, but I think we weren't super optimistic that we'd get a real high turnout. So I think that's maybe better than we expected.
Thank you.
And just as a reminder, we also got tenants from our USA data firm that we used a few months ago. They gave us a bunch of tenant information and from RecTrack, people who've got passes and things. So we had a couple other sources, so we, you know, have more tenants than just the ones that came through the Resolution 17 form.
Thanks.
If I could just finish, my, my questions. It's okay. I just wanted to kind of nail, wrap this up. So I could really think of this as the owner when they're, if they're, they're living there is basically renting out that second vote to the, to the, the person who's with them. And then should that, that person leave, they would get it back and they would have two votes again in there.
Yes.
Fair enough. Okay. I, I, I live in an area with a lot of renters, so I know that if I'm asked, I know what I, how I can respond. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
So the 298 that were identified as OT, is that self-reported or is that USA data or a mix?
It's a mix, most of it from USA data.
Yeah, and I guess one clarification, I'm pretty sure that all of the OTs we have a tenant for, because kind of by definition, we didn't mark them as OT unless we had a tenant. So I believe we have a tenant by name for all of the OTs.
But I guess my question is, have, how are we going to confirm that the owner and the renter live together? Because it's a mix of USA data plus some self-reporting to some degree. So how are we going to make sure that these individual voters are coded correctly? What is the process for vetting our assumption or hypothesis? Because it seems like it's in the gray area.
Ideally, it was Resolution 17, but, you know, we don't have 100% response rate or anything close to that. So we're kind of doing the best we can from the sources we have, and we have USA data and also RecTrack, so someone came through RecTrack as well.
I would love a follow-up on the 298 to just figure out your accuracy, your accuracy rate on what you're reporting. Because I just, I would hate to differentiate a voter when there's some data from USA data that says at some point there was another name attached to this address.
It's, it's a good point, but I can turn it around a little bit and add is that there are OO's out there who have not self-reported or have not been determined that have tenants. And they have chosen not to report that. They have their own reasons, okay? So that person is getting, or that, that person's getting two votes, their tenant, who is entitled to a vote, is not getting a vote. So it could go either way. And because the association.
Are we defining tenant with somebody with a lease?
I'm sorry?
How do we define tenant? Like a lease, I know Margaret has said she doesn't have a lease because her person is done. So what, how, how are we defining the requirement of tenant?
The tenant?
Just if you live there.
Is not really, lives in the house.
Okay.
Okay. It's, it's very, that's why I said, this is all evolving and it's going to be complicated because people don't want to tell you that they are renting to somebody. And there are a number of reasons why they don't want to tell you.
One is an owner and one is a tenant.
But you, unless you put somebody out on the street knocking on all these doors, I don't know how you fix that problem, but when Ed identifies them, we'll code them.
Go ahead.
Are we doing the whole, the whole thing or just this OT thing right now? Because mine, mine is a different, it's on this topic, but in a different section.
Go ahead.
Okay. On the OT piece, did you give some consideration about just combining OT and ABMG into one category and just saying, there are owners who either live or don't live at the property but have obviously a tenant that matches it? I mean, it's the same rule.
Well, no, except an ABMG does not live in the property and gets their ballot at a different address.
So you just, it's easier for us to distinguish it from an address, an administrative perspective?
They're voting, they get the same vote, but.
They get the same vote, and I think that's.
They just get ballots mailed different places. It's kind of the only difference.
So it's easier for you guys to distinguish. Then I'm, I'm fine with adding the OT. The question or comment I had was two. One is, there's been some concern, and I had put this in an email earlier, about when we have three candidates or four candidates, right, more than one page per district or, and people wanted to see something that helped members identify that they had to flip the page and see the other options. I see that you have see the next page. Because we print these things in color, I'm wondering if we can move the see the next page to above the footer, make it a little bit bigger and like highlight it in yellow or something that, right, draws your eyes to the indication that you need to flip the page to see the other options. If that's possible, I think that would help because I do see, I'm glad that we have a see the next page now, but I think we need something that's a little bit more eye-catching. And then the second one is on the, the new question, which is about identifying whether you're a new voter or whether you voted in the past. And that is information that we had asked for in the past. I was actually hoping that there was an electronic or data way to capture that information versus self-identifying.
The problem is.
Because I, I mean, I could check whatever box and that's, that's not really giving us accurate. Or maybe I, I voted 10 years ago and I've decided to vote now this time, am I going to call myself a new voter? I'm a new voter. I, like, that's the kind of statistics that we were looking for was actual voting data on repeat voters. How many repeat voters are we getting versus new voters? And I, I would hope that there's a, a more data-driven way to run a report like that. So for instance, the company that we outsourced to probably gives a unique identifier to Jennifer Juszczyk. And then next year, can they use the same unique identifier for Jennifer Juszczyk? And that way, we're now running a report that knows that I either voted or I haven't voted. Those are my comments. Thanks.
So in part, and I know part of Director Santa's motion was to use past year's data to try to formulate that, but because of some of the inaccuracies with the previous year's data and because of the fact that we don't have a consistent listing for renter data, because I know you wanted renter data to be included in that, they could not include renter data because renters turn over so often and because we've consistently had them listed as current resident for those that we didn't have names for, there's just no way for us to capture those metrics for renters. I did ask them, because owners, you know, year after year, same property generally have their, you know, PID issued to them, that you should be able to use that as a metric to see if they are new or returning. So we did include that in our proposal for this year's election. I don't know what that data will look like. I don't know how, if it'll be exactly what you're looking for, but based off of that information, we've asked them if they could at least provide us with those metrics for our Category A members who are living here in Reston and that we have information on and have for the past few years.
I would say if we think that we have made strides to get that type of information from the vendor, then I don't have strong feelings that we need to do a self-identifier. That's my opinion.
Can I?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious why that information is of interest and why is it worth spending a penny of assessment money on getting it?
It wasn't my suggestion.
Okay.
It was a suggestion that had come through. I'm just.
We have this, this body, before me, has discussed and even during the candidate informational meetings, has said, we need to improve turnout. Well, we don't know who our voters are. I don't know if these people are voting for the first time or there's a delay. I've asked.
And so how would that change? Anything that, that was.
Well, if you see a spike in new voters, that means that whatever Kara is doing is working. And if you see a dip and there's no more new voter registrations, and if you see people not returning, that's an indicator.
We get an indicator by the response rate.
Your response rate has fluctuated be, for the last year or two because the data has been, there's irregularities.
Okay. Good, thank you. So did you want to keep that, that line in the ballot or did you guys want us to remove it?
Which one?
You need a motion, Mr. President.
Yes, we need a motion.
Yeah.
For new voter or not.
Who wants to do the motion?
I move to, Mr. President, I move to approve the proposed changes to the 2025 election ballots and voting guides as recommended by the Elections Committee and amended by the board.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second. Discussion, we've had discussion. All those in favor?
What, what did we amend?
What was the amendment?
Everything that they've noted in the memo.
Yeah. All of the changes were in the memo.
This is an amendment from the past ballot.
Yes, so it's keeping.
So the motion was not amended, but.
Okay.
We're voting to approve this.
So we're not, we are voting to approve what we received from staff, essentially.
Yes, which is different from last year.
The January 7th version.
Okay, then I, I will vote against the motion because I think that the change that I suggested on the next, showing the next page is an important, I think it's something we asked for, something we've had issues with and worth making the change.
Make an amendment?
Well, he was about to take a vote, so I was, I was trying to at least get my comment.
We've had discussion and I was just waiting for you to just jump in and say your question. So do you want to do an amendment?
I, I can't remember your motion, but I would motion to re, to re, to, by unanimous consent, replace your, your motion with the addition of adding the direction to change the see the next page and make it more prominent as possible.
Okay.
Actually unanimous consent for that amendment.
Any objections?
No objection.
So moved.
So that amendment, so.
So we're back on the amended motion.
Amended, amended motion.
So on the amended motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask the Chairman of the Elections Committee a question relative to this coming year's election?
If it's brief, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Can I ask you to come to the mic?
You're forcing him to walk to the mic.
Yes, I am. I'm a terrible human being.
Look.
Excuse me? I'm joking. Last year, we had an issue regarding potential residency of the, of candidates. Has the Elections Committee come up with a way of guaranteeing that candidate, only candidates who are residents appear on their ballot?
We took that under advisement. We proposed, we have a proposed resolution change to address it. The board was unable to take up that resolution prior to the election, but it will be presented back to the board at some date in the future.
So they made a recommendation, it sounds like.
I'm sorry?
It sounds like the Elections Committee has disposed of it, it just hasn't made it to our board agenda?
No, it was on the spreadsheet. I guess it's.
Oh, we just didn't take any action.
You didn't take any action. It came as a recommendation, right? Yep.
So that long spreadsheet, remember, as you went through, we must have missed it.
I don't think so.
No, no.
No, we, we, because him and I conferred on this.
It will be, to the extent that we can determine, we will address it during the certification process.
Are we asking them to, are we asking candidates to produce anything to approve their residency?
We asked to change the candidate's statement and the petition statement to include language dealing with residency, to make sure that it was clear that you must be a resident. Because that changed, because that change was on a form that was approved by the board, we were instructed that we could not, and since the board could not take it up prior to the forms being made available to the public, we were told that those changes could not be made to the floor.
And that information was delivered to you from?
Mr. Champ.
So the recommendation came to you?
The form is part and incorporated in the resolution.
Right.
And so unless this board amends a resolution, the form stays as it is.
Okay, so that doesn't really answer the question, counsel?
Right.
That the form is unchanged, I'm not going to argue with. Whether or not a candidate is required to prove residency is not on the form. It is a procedure, certification procedure.
Right.
And it seems to me, so delivering to the committee a copy of their driver's license with the address in Reston or some other documentation that they live in Reston is not part of the form. It's part of the certification process. So that the form doesn't say it is irrelevant to the question that's pending.
Okay.
And the question that's pending is, what is the Elections Committee doing to make sure that only residents, RA members are running for the board? And I'm hearing that, not this year.
Not until that issue is part and partial with the resolution, okay? And so any requirements on us to make requirements on candidates would have to be incorporated into the resolutions, which we did not have time to bring to the board.
Mr. President, with all due respect, that is disingenuous an answer as I've heard on the, on the, I'm going to, I have the floor and I'm going to keep it. The requirement to be a, a member of RA is in the deed. You don't need a resolution to fulfill the requirement and to see that the requirement is satisfied. That's a requirement that's imposed on all of us by the deed. So I don't get this.
I understand. Counsel?
Let me see if I can unwind this a little bit. There is no formal written requirement that a certain document be prepared, provided or otherwise, such as, please show us your passport or something like that. It's nowhere in the resolution. The Elections Committee, in its powers to oversee the certification process, is certainly always empowered to take any and all necessary steps if they have a question as to residency. However, for instance, if Tony Champ applied to be on this board and no one knows which Tony Champ is, and Richard knows that I'm in Sterling, he could ask for additional stuff. If however, it was someone, say Wendy Cummins, pretty good idea that she lives in Reston and don't really need to go through that stuff. So I guess what I'm saying is, at this point, it's an art, not a science. To the extent we want to make it a science and put the whole membership on notice that we're going to request you provide an independent document which verifies your residency, that cannot be taken up until we put it in a resolution.
I disagree.
I disagree completely with counsel on that one, Mr. President. It's in the deed. The question is, how do you administer the deed?
So I'd like to ask, what in your view is involved in the process of certifying a candidate?
Well, there are a number of issues, but staff goes through the petitions.
Right.
Determines that everybody, okay, is, everybody is legitimate. We look at the candidate. The candidate tells us that they live at 2201 Cedar Cove Court. Okay? That's about all we do at this point.
You don't ask for any documentation of that address?
No.
Director Johnson, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, just before we move forward, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Chu for the accusation of your being disingenuous. Note that that is not the feeling of the entire Board and I'd prefer, if the, it obviously can't be taken from our record, but I'd like to apologize to you on behalf of myself. Thank you.
Sounds like we have two issues. And maybe we could ask the Elections Committee the next time you meet to maybe think about some of the things that could be done absent your recommendation that it sounds like you guys made to make and edit the actual form. And then it sounds like your recommendation to edit the form was your preferred method. So maybe we can figure out with staff at your next meeting when that new form request could come to the Board, but absent the fact that we're not doing a form, if you guys could brainstorm anything you could do absent the change in the form, since it's already out there now.
We are.
This year, that would be helpful and maybe counsel could also help you guys figure out if there are things that you can ask for, even though we haven't had a form, or, you know, give you your guidepost of how far can you go to certify residency? Because I don't know if there's any, maybe you can go as far as you want to go, I don't know, but any guideposts that you guys might have in asking for things like a driver's license after a application has been made.
First, for this election, what we could do is we have decided to emphasize, overly emphasize perhaps, the residency requirement in both the, in the information sessions and in the, I think it's going, it's clear in the call for candidates. We have been through, because we did not realize that we were going to have a problem getting the resolution changed, we have been through these discussions with, with counsel and others to determine what we could do. We're prepared for that.
Okay.
But it will be post this election.
Why?
Because there's no way that we can change forms at this late date.
It's got nothing to do with the form.
Go ahead.
If you can't change the form, but you have made it clear that there is a residency requirement, you've, you've made it abundantly clear, should there be a question, the candidates are, are aware, there's a question mark there, that they can, they can be asked for, for proof of residency, should there be a question?
The resolution says that.
There's nothing in the resolution barring that, and that's what I was talking about, the Election Committee's discretion. Again, using my example, if it's Wendy Cummins...
Right.
They probably don't need to see her ID. If it's someone that no one has heard of and there, or there is a question raised as to it, then there's nothing stopping from the Elections Committee saying, hey, can I, can I see your driver's license?
So this is a problem that, and I, I agree that it's, it's, it's an issue, but this is an issue that can easily be remedied this time, but next time, we could take action and make sure it's codified so we don't have to worry about this.
The discussions that have been had between myself and Richard was adding an affirmation to the application. I hereby swear and affirm I'm a resident of Reston Association, in addition to potentially requesting independent proof as a attachment to the document. Similarly, when you go to get a passport, you need to bring your ID and you need to attach like your birth certificate.
Sure.
That's a requirement that is a prerequisite for filing. If you don't put it there, you get thrown out. We don't have that in place right now. So now it's up to the Elections Committee to rule on each individual application. Going forward, if these changes are made, again, application comes in, they don't sign the affirmation, or application comes in and they live at 1234 Happy Street, Herndon, Virginia, application goes out, doesn't come before the committee unless they need to see it.
But that's something we can do next time?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
See, we start with the fact that staff has verified that the candidate is in good standing as a Reston Association member. So we start there.
It just doesn't get there.
Okay? The problem is, in the 0.1 cases, that person may not actually live. Remember I said, people who have three people, three OOs with the same owner? All these things are possibilities. Okay? And the question is, how much staff time, how much other time and money is spent trying to address these little pieces?
So we can...
As we move forward, I think we're going to discover more situations that have to be dealt with.
So you'll all be vigilant this time and then next time we'll take action?
I think as a result of last year, we have no choice.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. President, last word on, from me on this. We, we have, we had a situation last year where someone, somebody can be a member, an ABMG, right? So they're, no doubt, a member, and when the staff looks them up, they're going to come up with an address. But what was relayed to me was that person had automobiles in their property with out-of-state plates. And, and when I made inquiry of the then Chairman, it was, well, they're going to have to, someone who's making that observation is going to have to file a complaint. And we were faced with the possibility of having somebody elected who didn't live here, having somebody on the ballot who didn't live here. And that level of embarrassment is not something I think anybody on this Board wants to endure. So I would have hoped that by now, there would have been something in place to avoid that reputational damage. And I'm disappointed that we aren't there.
Okay. So I would recommend that the Elections Committee really take every, and take every, everything in their, during the certification process, even if you have a shadow of doubt, please act on that.
Yes, sir.
Director...
And Perry had her hand up.
Let me get Director Perry.
Instead of looking at people's license plates, did anyone ask the candidate?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Maybe we start with that. That would be great. Let's just ask people instead of looking at their license plates and trying to figure out where they live.
Director Perry, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Go ahead.
First and foremost, I would like to thank the Election Committee for coming through, for providing suggestions, guidance, documentation, suggestions. Perhaps the Board should have acted on something. Wow, that's an interesting concept and then maybe we wouldn't be here. However, we didn't. The Elections Committee is moving forward as is required and necessary, and I have no doubt that hopefully by next year, this Board, the coming Board, can actually act upon recommendations by our amazing volunteers and therefore, we won't have this issue in the future. And second, I agree with Trevor, because guess what? Drive by my driveway at any point during the year and you will also see cars with out-of-town license plates. I still live in Reston, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to, before we get to the next item on the agenda, yep, let's, let's do that one first. We have environmental briefing. Mike, you have the floor, please.
So as Mike comes up here, just a few thoughts from me. You know, Mike, Mike's been doing a really great job since he came on board last April with thinking about new initiatives, ways to increase the environmental agenda in Reston, which was his mandate when we brought him on board. The purpose of the briefing tonight, I'm sure everyone watched the video, Mike has a series of questions or thoughts. We'd love to just get some Board feedback on different initiatives so that we can maybe come back again by the end of the year with a report from Mike. We'd also like to start to work the environmental briefing into the quarterly briefings that we do for the other departments. So this is sort of an off-cycle, but just really looking for some Board feedback on some of the things from Mike, so I'll turn it over. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Board. It's nice to see you all. I promise I didn't bring my 52-page Excel sheet to go through.
Thank you very much.
But if you want that kind of environmental director, you have to start over. But the presentation, so what I wanted to impart to you was the legacy that you have inherited as the leaders of this organization. It is a tremendous, a tremendous legacy that a homeowners' association that is different than almost any other in the United States, one of the first, it has been a worldwide interest, particularly a few decades ago. People used to come here from all over the world to understand what happened, what Bob Simon did. And that legacy has continued with a really great environmental staff. You've had two or three people that spent almost 30 years here that did lots of different, very scientifically-based work. And I wanted to impart to you that you now have a really, really solid crew. I've rarely been able to, the last few years, work with such a solid team. They're young, they're ambitious, and they love this resource and they're very dedicated. What I also wanted you to get across from the presentation is that there's a lot of different products, guidance, county plans that we can be very consistent with, that we have good guidance, we have the Razer Report that your EAC produces every two years, which is extremely extensive and is a very large database. And I wanted you to then just have a handle on which the different groups are, so we can certainly have questions and answers on those if you have them. But in thinking about your legacy and in thinking about, at the end of the day, I know we are a homeowners' association, right? But with all the issues that you're dealing with tonight, but we're also land managers and you're one of the largest private land managers left in DC and Northern Virginia. And what you do and what you decide, what we do as staff with partners in the county in particular, is really watched and very much viewed. And so symbolic leadership is sometimes, sometimes as important as some of the things that we do do. Pete has asked me to take a philosophy of trying to find other people's money to help us out wherever we can...
Yes.
...to be, to relook at how we do things in an efficient way, in a very professional way, in a science-based way. So that's some of the things that we are looking at and cleaning up. We've had a lot of staff. While I'm new, and I mentioned to you that the environment for Reston is not new, the crew has been spread out over the years. We've had part of them at CSF, part of them in Recreation, sometimes they moved, sometimes they just worked for Larry. And now we have a division and a directorate, if you will, and I work with peers. And that's something that will be a big part. I hope you picked up on the sustainability part. I'll be working with every one of the leadership here in RA about their sustainability options, which really, at the end of the day, can help, what benefits the environment usually benefits our bottom line and usually we find cost savings or other things in that. So for example, energy. So what I'd like to do, just for a couple minutes, and then we can just have a conversation if you want or move forward, is in the last page of the presentation are the things that we'll be sort of looking at, and one of the first ones that I wanted to mention to you is, I will want to come in front of you or some forum through the EAC to talk about an offer that we have from an organization called the American Forest Foundation. I've had a number of conversations over the last few months with them. They're a nonprofit along with a nature conservancy that help private landowners and small family farmers do, they, they actually pay them to manage their forests and their resources for carbon sequestration, and they simply do it by encouraging you to do all the right practices to keep forests healthy and they give you a forest management plan every 10 years with their expertise. And they would give us money. They would give us, you know, upwards of $100,000 over a period, over a contract period that honestly is not a lot of money. I'll just be, I'll be upfront with you about that, but it, it goes back to that symbolic leadership that I talked about as well. But it would also be making more money than we do now on our forests. So I will want to talk to you about it. It's a very complicated, potentially fraught proposal, but it's also exciting and it's the kind of thing that Reston is known for doing. We, under the category of other people's money, we're going to be looking at the state and, and Ben Rhodes with his talents, we're going to work on a grant that we're almost insured from the state to get to work on the Lake Ann Dam design. And I was in here in the Lake Ann Dam conversation. I know its history, but it is a listed dam on the state's list that needs to be paid attention to. And in a climate change scenario, while there isn't a current crisis at all, why don't we start investing in that into the future? So that's something on our agenda, along with other things with the county. We're excited about talking to you about solar energy installs. I'm right now researching and dealing with Dominion over whether, how we would get solar energy installs basically without an upfront investment. And then the other one is Greenspot, which is a company much like the other, by the way, Reston has about 58 to 60 public charging stations now for EVs, but we have had some, maybe some folks even on the Board that were involved in connecting us to Greenspot, which is a company offering to do some EV charging in our, on our facilities. They, they were first approached about Ridge Heights Pool, I believe, and we've offered them, they've come back and forth with us over the last few months and we still are working with them about some other sites. They're interested in being on Reston property, but if they can also be in high-traffic areas. So we're working on those sustainability plan. We're looking at the garden plot program, both in terms of how it's managed well, but also whether or not it could be expanded. That, we've identified about three or four different locations. They're often locations that we could leverage. In other words, they have a garden and they have space still, and then there's a couple sites actually that we have found mostly around the right-of-way open property that we could expand. We know that that's a very, very popular program. Our waiting list is some, you know, sometimes upwards of 100 people deep. And then we want to keep working with all of our HOA partners and through Cam Shop about climate resiliency, which is, as we all know, a really, really important topic, but doing it in a smart way and not doing it in a way that creates a large bill, but more or less is just very practical and very much about good management. So, so I think that's really the highlights that I wanted to give to you, and I wanted to kind of reintroduce myself after being here since April, and I would like to show up a little bit more on the quarterly level with you all, my fellow directors, to talk to you about your environmental management responsibilities. So with that, Pete, if there was something else, we can answer questions and I can move on.
I, I would just commend you for the list of items that you mentioned and fantastic.
Great.
Very good.
Thanks, Mr. President.
I was going to comment on the items that you had for Board consideration, just to give you my personal feedback, and maybe they will or will not align with the rest of my fellow Board members. But I would say my overarching comment is I think that, I think that the Board really needs to come up with, what are our strategic goals related to environmental items? You know, we, we have had a, a change of, of staff and we have been doing, you know, things in this area for years, as you had mentioned, because we, we have this legacy. But what, what is, what is the future of that? And I think that since I've been on the Board, I have never really truly understood where we're trying to go with it. And is, are there different things that we're trying to do that are for specifically RA versus for our members versus for the greater Fairfax community? Where are we on that, that continuum is, is I think a challenge that the Board really needs to help give staff feedback on and give... needs to help give staff feedback on and give our, our EAC feedback on, because I feel like staff and, and the committee keeps bringing us reports and, and, and studies and good information, but I'm not sure that we've given them that overarching from a governance standpoint. Where, where, what are our goals or where do we want to go? When it comes to the, the slide deck, and, and this is where I came up with that concept, because I was like, wow, these are just a lot of projects, and whose wish list were these projects on? And they're, it's not that they're, they're bad projects, it just, it, those pieces aren't fitting together for me of what we're trying to accomplish. So on the carbon program, I, I would be a yes on that. I know it's, it's probably significantly less than the wetlands credit. I just want to make sure that, and it sounds like you're going through a foundation, so this wouldn't be applicable, but there are lots of government programs out there related to the environment, and with your history, you certainly are probably familiar with them. But there's also a lot of compliance whenever you do something with federal government. And so whenever we're going into considerations for grants or getting money from other sources, please take that federal, especially the federal piece, compliance under consideration because we might not want to venture into that area.
Yep.
Lake Anne Dam design, I'm a yay, please, please, because it was three years ago. I sent that in and said, look, here's a grant we can get. That's basically like a guarantee, and so I'm excited you guys are going after that. And same thing with the dam safety equipment. Solar energy, I will tell you, I'm on the fence on, but that's just because I feel like we're so covered in forest.
Yeah.
That I'm just not sure if it's worth, worth it. So I, I would say maybe explore that at a higher level and, and give us your, your gauge on it before.
Yeah.
I could make a call on.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
Spending a lot of time on it.
It's, 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 ironically, our tree canopy is our worst enemy on that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. But there are sites, there are potential sites.
There are potential, okay. As far as the EV charging stations, I'd like to see that one, that project be more internal to RA, meaning how can, how can, how can we in RA use EV charging stations before we expand that out to how do we deliver them from an RA perspective to our members? With the exception of, I'd like, where you've been, the environmental group has been partnering with, with CAM's group on delivering information about what options are out there from the county perspective for our members, or what is an EV charging station design guideline look like that our clusters can use? But as far as like us offering paid EV charging stations around Reston, I'd like to see us have more experience in it for RA use before we do it for, for members. I, I couldn't tell you anything about a sustainability plan and whether you should or shouldn't, because I honestly don't know what one is, so I'd need more information on that. I'm very pro-expanding the garden plots, and I think that we had consensus on the board to do that during the budget process, so I'd be surprised if that was something that people on the board were against. And then climate resiliency, I noted in your presentation that we're on that task force. And again, I, like, what is our goal in sitting on that Fairfax County task force? What are we trying to achieve by sitting on, on that task force? Is it just to be good stewards and saying, here, we have learned experiences, we have information, we want to share? Or is it something more than that? Are we trying to get them to make recommendations to the county for things? So I, I'd like to see a little bit more understanding of what we're trying to achieve. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. We can, I can follow up with all of that.
Okay. Sounds good. Yes, Director Johnson?
I could not be more excited than to hear about you expressing interest in Reston, Reston's symbolic leadership in the environmental area. And I think that that's an area that we can make a lot of progress with, though I, my term on the board is coming soon to an end. I need to speak with you later this week if I can, or, I mean, next week, because invasive plants is a particular interest of mine, and there's a lot that's going on statewide and in Fairfax County that.
Well, you all did a good job, and I want to thank you for investing. You, you gave us an investment which we're going to make you proud this year.
Fifty thousand.
On invasives. That's one of the biggest tools we could fight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director Johnson? I'll come back to you.
Thank you. I missed the number that you said of EV chargers that we've got in the area, but I guess the, it's a simple question, is that a lot?
It surprised me, but I, I don't think there's a ton, and I, so here's the numbers. 52 public charging stations, 197 ports, and they, this is coming actually out of the folks doing the Razer Report, and that surprised me. I think that 197 is, you know, CAM and his crew have been rocking it with getting the clusters. The, the county basically complained to me recently that Reston is the only one getting the EV chargers in the apartment buildings and clusters, because they, because they're rocking it.
So I'm sorry, the 197 was in clusters?
No, 197 is some sort of number that they were able to find that, that says that that's how many charging ports are around here, probably includes people's garages, to be honest with you. So it's about 52 public sites.
Fifty-two.
So Fox Mill Shopping Center comes to my mind. There's about eight of them there, right?
North Point.
Yeah. But there is none on RA land, other than what friends of Reston gave us that was mentioned tonight. We do have that one operating at Walker.
So.
So it's not a ton, but it's getting better.
Can we do something to make it a ton? My, my, my question is, you know, going back to what Jennifer was talking about with, as far as goals go.
Yeah.
How do we make increasing that a goal, one, well, actually, that's number two. First is, should we make increasing that number a goal?
So I kind of like what Director Justcheck talked about a few minutes ago, is I think we should pilot a little bit on our property for a couple really quick reasons. I don't want to go too deep into it, but we honestly don't have large parking lots.
Right.
So one of the things that you might start dealing with is, is the, hey, everybody's taking up my parking spaces, charging the car, and where are they? Are they really at the pool or not, right?
Yeah.
So there are some places that you can think off the top of your head, like Lake Newport Pool and things, that we would have plenty of room, but we, so we just need to think those things through. But the short answer to your question is, these companies will put stuff in mostly for free, and then they get a payback by being the agent, if you will.
Okay.
To make the money. So they're willing, but they also want traffic. So some of the sites on Reston that we would like to, you know, to selfishly serve ourselves doesn't seem to have the traffic interest for, you know, that's one of the challenges of Greenspot. We're just trying to say, hey, but South Lake Shopping Center is just over here. Somebody could park over at Lake Otterbonne and do that, too.
Okay. Last question on that topic. I guess the, I have neighbors who, with, with electric cars who, I live in a cluster, and have some difficulty getting, you know, their car charged at their house.
Access.
Yeah. They've, they've gone through some pretty interesting ways of getting the cable from their house to the sidewalk without, without making it a hazard. Can we, can we start to kind of focus on how we can do that in, on a cluster level?
Yeah. I bet, CAM, I'm not putting you on the spot, but we can work with design, you know, the design guidelines that are already there with the covenants committee and other things, but we could also be working to pull, like, if you had a list of folks that are having trouble.
Yeah.
We could, we can marry them up with the right expertise.
Okay.
We're, we're starting to know and meet those people frequently.
Good.
Be happy to help.
Go ahead. I, I think it might be helpful to the board, although your presentation on the subject will come later, to talk a bit about the sustainability plan that you're working on, because that is essentially the overarching approach to these issues.
Yeah.
And it is, I have read a draft, and, and it is comprehensive in many respects, but I'd like him just briefly address it, because he will be coming to the board with a more deep, with a detailed presentation.
Our plan is to work hand-in-hand with you, so that you won't be surprised that you'll have input on this, and so that's why you haven't seen a lot of it. And we've drafted it through the EAC. It's actually not something we're making up from scratch. In, during COVID, so you may not have remembered this, but you actually have a, I can't remember the exact acronym, but it's a Reston Climate Action Plan, and it really hasn't been touched. So it was, I think, 21 or two when you all passed it, maybe 21. And that, really, it, we're lifting from that. I'm trying to bring in professional sustainability comparisons, benchmarks that others are doing, and then we will give a draft to you and probably workshop it, is our thought, or some subset of you, through the EAC. But the sustainability plan does exactly what you described, like, what is, and it really could probably be a pretty narrow thing, so that we don't get too ambitious, because environmental managers are expensive, if you let us.
So all the comments, I hope you've picked up, that we look forward to having you back again to talk about the details and where you're headed strategically and tactically in these programs. And also, I'm sure you are familiar, you know about some of the implications if you go for a government grant, as Director Justcheck mentioned.
Yeah.
There are implications, there are things that you have to do, so, but I, I know you know those based on your past experience, so just be aware of those and share with us where you're headed and so on. So look forward to having you more.
Tony is keeping me on a very short.
I just want to make one, emphasize one, one other aspect, and that is, one of the things that we thought about when we thought about having this position developed and employed, and that was the benefit of having an environmental viewpoint.
Yep.
It become a viewpoint across the entire actions of the, of the.
Symbolic leadership.
Reston Association, so that it's an integrated approach. And it's a part of the thinking that goes into the planning for all of the actions.
Agreed. Thank you.
I have one here. Not for today, but I would welcome written update on the trash collection district and whether small district tax five can be pursued by RA so that.
It's next meeting.
It's the next meeting.
Oh, is it? I didn't even read it.
On the agenda.
To answer that question, the, the county is thinking about an overall approach for Fairfax.
Yep.
In which they would take sections and basically bid them out.
Right now, I, I just, I just want the taxes, where the, where the tax funding for the small district can be applicable to tax collection for.
Yep. I've, I've already got messages in and.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to propose that we defer items K and L to next time.
Second.
Please.
I would defer them to the first meeting in February.
Thank you very much. I need the motion for that.
I motion to move items.
K and L.
K and L to February board working session.
Second.
Second.
Margaret, thank you. Seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, all? Thank you very much.
It is not unanimous. It's not unanimous.
I am sorry, Director Johnson.
I will abstain.
You will abstain.
And I'm voting no.
Those against, there's one, and so we have 7, 1, 1, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Seventy.
I believe we are ready for executive session.
Mr. Chairman, you need a motion.
Yes. For the executive session.
I motion to extend the meeting for an additional 90 minutes.
Ninety minutes. We have to do something. That's vital.
Just, just to clarify, does that, starting at 10:30 when the meeting ends?
Yes.
Okay. So until midnight. Great.
That's midnight.
Midnight.
No.
Oh, goodie. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, we've got Slashman, Farrell, Santa. All those against, Dodd and Johnson against abstaining. So we have six, two, and one, and we're extended till midnight. The motion to go into executive session.
You skipped over Jay.
We deferred that one in the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was at the beginning of the meeting tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I move that the board of the Reston Association convene executive session to consult with legal counsel and discuss contractual and personal matters.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're ready for executive session.
I'll see environmental director here for Reston Association. I'm going to spend a few moments going over our environmental program and our directorate with you. Here's an org chart of the organization that was created this last year. It combines the watersheds, natural areas, land use planner, land use program, also the Walker Nature Center. Each of the program leads are very skilled in the group. We have Ben Rhodes that leads watersheds and lakes. He also handles all the drainage and erosion and overall environmental management in the field for us. The natural areas is led by James Houck. He does garden plots, all the forest canopy work, along with the arborists, invasive species, the strip areas, and anything to do usually with animal response, like our beaver, things like that. The Walker Nature Center is very famous in the area for its programs and its interpretation education programs. We have Natalie, who's joined us as our land use planner. And then sustainability planning is a group effort, and I'll go into that in a few more minutes. RA's environmental program is overseen by a number of relevant planning documents. The most important, of course, is the deed and our governance documents, but there's also the Razer Report, the, done by our environmental advisory committee, the strategic plan. We also are part of the Biophilic Cities Network, which we meet with monthly. And then there's a number of resource plans, including dam, safety, a climate plan that was done in 2022 by the EAC for the board, as well as three or four county plans. The most important are the community-wide energy and climate action, the resilient Fairfax plan, and the zero-waste plan that we try and stay consistent with. There's a number of partnerships, and we have really re-engaged with those here at the Reston Association over the last few years. I will point out that we sit now on the Resilient Fairfax Board for the county, and that we also are very active with Fairfax Green Business, which is also a new endeavor that involves lots of businesses and those that support and give to environmental causes around Fairfax County. We support the EAC. We also help out with the Lake Equity Working Group, our land use advisory committee staffed by Natalie, and then we've been helping Prac once in a while with some GIS for trails and those kinds of things. On the watershed and lakes, we focus an awful lot on boat programs for our residents, dam safety and inspections, the health and science of the lakes themselves, particularly the harmful algae bloom problem that has been growing. We're very much looking into new methods. Ben works with a number of contractors, and this is a very strong program here at RA. In the natural areas program, we have two or three folks that work with James, and again, they coordinate lots of forest health, endangered species and invasive species, as well as things that have to do with the land-based areas. The Walker Nature Center focuses a lot on children's programs, on education, working with the schools locally. They're also just a great resource for stewardship and people's information. They also have a native plant sale that's becoming quite well-known and very, very supported. And then, of course, our new land use planning efforts that are tracking and helping the board manage all of the various changes happening in Reston. I'd like to go over just a few of the first-year accomplishments that we've had this year. We ended up getting a EV station set up for both public use and RA member use with a, a new streamlined app that lets access for free or access by charge. We freed up millions of dollars in the Stream and Wetland Mitigation Fund, finally. We had environmental programs reorganized under this one directorate with a lot of new focus on those programs. We also have a carving funding offer from the American Forest Foundations that we can talk about into the future. We set up a new tree donation program, and then we have a number of things that have changed with sustainability that I'll go over with you in a few minutes as well. When sustainability planning comes up, we are focused on a new plan for RA operations across the board. We're looking at energy and solid waste, we're looking. We're looking at our rich forest resources, our natural resources, and also maybe expanding community gardens and looking at the resiliency of the organization. We're also approaching it very much as just really good management means good sustainability and cost savings. Coming up for the board for your consideration, we'll be dealing with the Family Forest Carbon Offer. It's an offer to give us basically some funding over the course of 20 years if we promise to set aside certain areas of our undeveloped forests for simply growing for carbon sequestration. They also offer us a free forest management plan in the process, which is worth at least $50,000 every 10 years. We have lake and and other dam safety equipment grants going on and engineering grants. We are going to be looking at solar energy on our facilities, at EV charging stations. Again, the sustainability plan that will work closely with each of the RA operational directors and then all of you for the next stages of that over the next few months, hopefully by spring. We're looking at our garden plots and then, of course, always working with the HOAs and the county on overall resiliency with the changing climate.
Hello, this is Peter Lusk, Chief Operating Officer with the Reston Association. This presentation is to provide an overview of the new proposed recreation facilities investment process. This process is a revision from the previous process that was put in place by the Recreation Facilities Working Group that is designed to include the community in recreational facility investment decisions while providing the Board of Directors with the information required to make informed decisions. The new process proposed by staff is to supersede the previous process and to also eliminate the key decision point or KDP process that is currently being used by staff. On this slide, we see the original Recreation Facility Investment Process document. The process begins by identifying the needs of the Reston community and using a decision-making matrix to evaluate an investment of over $500,000. One of the reasons for making tweaks to this process is that the Reston Association recently completed a community survey that clearly articulates the needs of the community, thus eliminating the need to continuously evaluate the needs of the community. The process also contemplates if community engagement is required and if a facility should be kept by RA or changed into a different type of facility. These decision points are also included in the updated process that we will talk about in additional slides. What you're seeing here is the key decision point workflow process. This slide demonstrates the current process that staff is using to plan touchpoints with the Board of Directors regarding capital projects. While this process provides an efficient delivery method for capital projects, it does not include opportunities for community engagement or for evaluation of a facility in the future. The new process proposed by staff on the next slide will eliminate the KDP process. What you're seeing on the screen is a working product that staff have been using to create a new process for investments in recreation facilities. The new process includes four steps: initiate, engage, consider, and execute. In step one, or the initiate step, projects are identified through the CIP, reserve study, or other means. Projects over $500,000 or that may include community engagement such as tot lots are identified in this step and identified as needing to go through this process. In step two, or the engage step, staff plan community engagement regarding a project. Different types of engagement are detailed at the end of this presentation, but depending on project type, the type of engagement will vary. In step three, or the evaluate step, the Board of Directors will receive an overview of the feedback heard through engagement processes. The Board will hear a feedback from the community included keeping or removing an amenity, or if additions or alterations to the project have added budget, scope, or schedule to the project. Then we come to step four, the execute step. By this time, the Board of Directors should have all of the information required to make an informed decision. Contract approval should be a formality at this point, and staff and the Board should agree on the next steps regarding every project. The Park and Recreation Advisory Committee has reviewed this updated process at both its October and December meetings and has voted to endorse the new process. What you're seeing here is the clean version of the previous document. This is the document staff will plan to publish to all staff, and then we will plan to follow with the Board of Directors as we continue to complete capital projects. Finally, we come to our levels of engagement. As we were developing the Recreation Facilities Investment Process, a three-step engagement process was also created to provide guideposts surrounding community engagement. There are three steps included, the first being the communicate step. The communicate step is for maintenance projects that do not meet the $500,000 threshold and that will include communication only to the membership. This is mainly for maintenance projects like trail paving. The consult step is for projects that may meet the $500,000 threshold, but will include one to two engagements with the community even if the project does not meet that dollar limit. Tot lots are a great example of the consult stage of this process. In 2025, staff will complete five different tot lot projects and will use this process for each of those tot lots.
I have just a very quick update for you all that I can provide.
And lastly, we have the involve step. The involve step is imagined to be an iterative process between staff, the community, and the Board. This will include three to five different engagements and will allow for the community to provide feedback at every step of the project.
General Assembly 2025.
A great example of this is the upcoming Lake Newport Tennis Project funded for 2026. Staff will lead an engagement process throughout 2025. Thank you for listening to this presentation. I look forward to answering any questions. Hello, this is Peter Lusk, Chief Operating Officer with the Reston Association. The following presentation is a first step in discussing siting of pickleball courts in Reston. The presentation focuses on draft criteria for considering new courts in Reston and how these criteria could be applied in the future. So how did we get here? Following discussions after the Barton Hill Project, staff proposed pickleball siting criteria as a next step in discussing the future of pickleball in Reston. At that time, the Board of Directors directed staff to develop criteria for siting courts in Reston and to return to the Board of Directors to begin this conversation. Why is siting criteria important? When citing amenities in a community such as pickleball courts, a systematic approach to planning and selecting an area for this amenity for the community allows for greater transparency into the selection process. Siting criteria will be discussed throughout this presentation, including multiple aspects such as setback criteria, number of courts, size of the site, existing amenities, sound dampening efforts, and environmental considerations. In this presentation, you will hear the first draft of criteria that staff have selected for Board of Directors' consideration. It is important to note that this presentation and the staff process did not include identification of any new locations for pickleball in Reston. Our first criteria is setback criteria. The United States Pickleball Association previously recommended a 500-foot setback from all pickleball courts to surrounding homes. While this recommendation is no longer in place, staff are recommending using this as a baseline for siting courts in Reston. The second criteria is the court size and number of courts. Number of courts should be considered when evaluating sites for pickleball. It is best practice typically to include a minimum of four courts when creating a pickleball facility. This requires around 10,000 square feet of space and should be considered when citing A third consideration are sound dampening efforts. Best practices have evolved over time since pickleball became popular in the Northern Virginia area around 10 years ago. Consideration of siting pickleball courts in Reston should include sound dampening efforts. While this isn't necessarily a criteria for siting courts, it will have effects on the potential budget of a project and should be considered throughout the pickleball planning One of the strongest criteria included in this draft is the current existence of amenities required to host pickleball at a current site. Courts are known to bring large quantities of players, so the consideration of existing amenities listed below is important. Some of these amenities include parking, bathroom access water fountain shade structures, seating areas, others could include access to electricity, things of that nature. We know that pickleball will bring crowds, so having these amenities available for any new courts is an important consideration. The last consideration in our draft criteria are environmental considerations. Any siting effort for a recreational amenity should include environmental considerations. Some of these considerations would include proximity to a resource protection area or RPA, tree considerations, and existing animal habitat. To recap, this presentation included five criteria to be considered for discussing new potential pickleball courts in Reston. These criteria include setback criteria, court size and number of courts, sound dampening efforts, considerations of existing amenities, and environmental considerations. As mentioned previously in this presentation, staff have not initiated an effort to apply these criteria to existing courts or other spaces within Reston. This was merely an exercise to provide information to our Board of Directors to begin a conversation about potentially thinking about pickleball courts in the future. Staff recommend including the siting of pickleball courts in the park's master planning process funded in 2025 and 2026, ultimately to make a recommendation to the Board of Directors. Thank you for listening. I look forward to answering any questions. Thank you for listening. I look forward to answering any questions.
I move that the resident association board of directors' certifiates to the best of each member's knowledge that only those appropriate for executive session of a involving personal matters or involve consultation council were discussed to consider by the board during executive session.
Second.
Mr. President, I think we're at the board.
We don't need to adopt that until, that doesn't need to be adopted until March. And so, I would move that we adopt an agenda that removes all of those items from next week and that in place of the annual planning session that we put in an executive session at the seven o'clock item and set aside hour and a half, hour and a half for that item.
Ninety minutes.
That's good.
I have a question, and that is what happens with the committee work plans and the Lake Equity Work Group report?
Kick them over to the next meeting.
It'll be the first meeting in February, just so we can tell them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In all honesty, I'm not, I'm not aware of any of our committees having work plans ready for our consideration. I could be wrong.
They are.
But even if they are not adopted or considered by this board until February, they can continue on with the work that they've already got.
So, we have a motion to revise the schedule for January 23 as described by Director Farrell. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
No, 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 no.
One dissent.
Well, wait a minute, call them.
All those against. Anybody abstaining? So, we have eight.
Zero one.
Zero one.
Eight one zero.
Eight one zero. Look, it's 12:30, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President, unless someone has new business to bring up, I believe we've completed all of the work for this evening's agenda and we are done.
Does anybody have any other business before us? Having no business before us, the meeting is adjourned at 12:24.
Well, we've got five and a half minutes left.